Six o'clock. Let's call this meeting of the Central Curry School District. Board of Directors to order on March 18th, 2020. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, somebody anticipated me forgetting my notebook. That's weird.
I'm looking.
I'll read the mission statement. The mission of the Central Curry School District Number One in partnership with families and community is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute in a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of educational excellence. Item number two, celebrations and presentation. I think we're probably going to bypass that one tonight.
But I would, if you will, just remind everyone for the best clarity for our viewing audience, if we could make sure we speak up loudly.
Ah, yes.
Do we have a good level at this point?
Some of you.
Okay. So please keep that in mind and we'll use the space behind me for any public comment.
All right. Agenda changes. Anybody?
So I did want to reflect a change in adding eight point. Here's the risk that this was all of the agenda changes. So on the printed agenda you have in front of you, 8.3 request for unpaid leave is withdrawn. In its place, we will put proclamation for self-injury awareness month. Everything else is as good as print. And your blue supplementary reflects that change.
Very good. I had an objection. Anybody? Any else? All right. Consent agenda approved minutes of February 5th, 2020, and February 9th, 2020 special meeting, and February 19th, 2020 ready. Everybody read them for.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agreed. Agenda approved. Citizen input. I'll read my little paragraph here. On behalf of fellow board members at this time, I would like to invite any member of the audience to step to the podium with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on the agenda this evening. Please begin by stating your name and address. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to five minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak. We ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. If you have thoughts to share about items that are included as topics for tonight's meeting, we would invite those comments when we reach that point in the meeting. Thank you. I've got the cards here. Mr. Clay, you can go first.
Well.
Or are you up here? Specific.
Eight three.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Never mind. Mr. Lee, you're up.
I had a specific agenda.
Oh, you did? Oh, yeah. Okay. It's been a long day. I'll get it together.
And these are new protocols.
Yeah.
We're developing, so.
Okay. We're moving on then. District reports. Obviously, we'll skip over the student reports. Crystal?
You have your monthly financial reports. Should be in front of you. There's honestly nothing exceptional on any of these reports. The blue report, your revenue, you can see where we are right now with local taxes. Current year taxes, we're about $190,000 short from meeting the goal. I expect that we will meet that. We're also real close on prior year taxes. Those are the kind of things that we're looking at usually this time of year to see if we're within the range, and we are. There's nothing exceptional on the expenditure page, anything, nothing that warrants any kind of second look or concern. The percentages are all looking very good. I would like to remind you, sometimes the percentages look low, and that's because of the way we pay the majority of our people. I'll remind you again. For example, teachers, they're paid one check September through May, and then they receive three checks in June. So you don't want to look at these percentages and think, boy, we're, you know, we're so far in the year and they should be higher because a huge amount of the percentages in these categories is payroll, and a lot of these categories anyway is payroll. And a lot of people get about 25% of their pay in the month of June. And then your cash balance, it's actually pretty high right now compared to the last few years. We are not fronting any funds out for seismic grant work. And those dollar amounts were enormous, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then we would get that back, you know, towards the end or maybe even in June, depending on when things were being done. So we don't have that happening, and so you're going to see a difference there, especially when you're looking over the last couple of years about where our cash is, and that's one of the reasons why.
Questions? Thank you.
Nice ad question, real fast. Mr. Chair. Just on the, I think it was just standing out to me because I was reading the SIA report, just the alternative education. I know it was a grant. Right?
Yes. Our alternative education program is being run through Measure 98, which is also called High School.
225.
225. High school grad in college, yes.
It's on page three?
Yeah. I see that it was tapped out, so I was just.
Yeah, when we actually, when, okay, so there's multiple budgets in the school district. This is the budget that I do to meet the requirements of local budget law. A lot of times, this budget is done prior to the actual detailed budget for these programs. So at the time I was doing this budget, we were thinking, boy, Alt Ed might be a nice thing to do. Let's put it in the budget. By the time we did the actual Measure 98 budget, which has been revamped multiple times already this year, we're moving those funds around. So that's why you're going to see that. So the counselor at the high school is now going over and doing Alt Ed at the library, correct? At the library. So those costs are now coming into this. The 200 funds, though, we, the way we appropriate funds and we appropriate them at certain levels, or you guys appropriate them at certain levels, which allows us to spend at certain levels, all of the 200 funds are appropriated together. We don't appropriate, in other words, fund 225 different from 226. We do it all in one so that we have some play in there for when things like that happen, especially with these grants that I'm writing a budget before we have the actual grant budget written.
Good. I surrender the floor.
Without objection, something, something. Principal reports. Mr. Danny is absent.
Yes.
Did Mr. Mesker want to give a?
No, I think, well, honestly, what's going on and what we have to cover tonight, I think it's appropriate to say that we'll be back to reporting in April.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I'll kind of follow the same route, really, in my buff reports. Our enrollment is, came down about four, three students from a month ago. If you look at our three-year average, or maybe this probably could go back five or six years, we're about the same. But the one point of interest I did want to share with the board is I have received a letter of resignation from Jean Zuber, effective at the end of the school year for purposes of retirement. Acknowledge that resignation on your behalf.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Moving on. Old Business, 7.1 Student Success Act update.
Well, the majority of our work is around that tonight, but I thought I'd start maybe just as an introduction to two documents that would be in your packet that is separate from your agenda packet, and that has the student investment account grant application template. I'm also going to project those on the wall here for our audience members. The two items I wanted to share with you at this moment were kind of the overall, if I can find it. Apologies, here we go. And I'll try to scroll that up somehow. Josh, you might have to help me here. Mackenzie, I can't find it where it is over here. Anyway, this is the end result of 280, I believe it's 289 online responses, and I broke it down. It's not by demographic, except at the end you'll find that, but this is by category based on that survey of what, how people voted. Remember that people could vote for as many as they wanted, and so those percentages don't add up to 100. And with that said, those top items, then, in the next part of the process, became the posters that you see on the north wall. And that's where, when we had public input during Riley Creek Literacy Night, we had another with the high school, and also, this was the basis of the student forum, we had, these posters were all full of sticky notes, kind of putting their priorities up there. And these, we'll go into a little bit more detail as we get into the actual plan. The other one I wanted to share with you was specifically that student survey. And I believe in your packet, it's the last page of your SIA packet. I asked Mrs. McGinnis to facilitate this session. We asked for a representative, two representatives from each class during one period. And so the group came, it turned out to be, the request was a boy and a girl from each class. It turned out that we had more girls than guys, but hey, that's what it is. But I, the reason I bring this out is I really felt it was important to hear specifically what the students were, how they were reacting to these statements. You'll notice that our student forum doesn't have any seniors, so in, I wish there would have been, but in the sense, with that said, these are all students who, you know, are planning to return next year and be a benefit of the grant. So I think as you read their specific input, you'll see that they, I think they did a good job of identifying from a student perspective how these, how these separate items meant. Example, technology, after-school programs, enriching the classes that they take, facilities, the mental health support and so on. I believe they represent, did a very good job of representing their peers. So more, we'll go into more depth once we get into the SIA. As far as, any questions on those two items? Okay. So again, we'll go into the SIA a little bit more depth in a few minutes. The second item is the school closure update, and I'm going to start with that, and then I'll also ask Crystal to provide us an update around food service. So it's interesting, just before I arrived, I went out to get the mail and saw the Curry reporter was waiting for me in the mailbox, so anxiously go to the front page, and there is the revised press release that I had given Matt to publish Monday night for Tuesday to go to print. Of course, we all know that Tuesday afternoon, the world changed again. So I'm hoping, and the way he put it on the page, it does say, Governor, you know, closes schools till April 28th, so hopefully people will, who are reading our article, will understand some of the dates will change. But it just represents the world we're in, the new normal, I think is kind of what we're, as we're learning some of these new words and phrases, flattening the curve, social What I'd like to share with you briefly were results of my superintendent call-in this morning with Colt Gill, who's the Deputy Superintendent of Instruction, the head of He took the first part of the meeting to reemphasize and clarify the Governor's executive order from yesterday, that schools in Oregon will remain closed through April 28th at this point. Whereas the first closure, the seven-day closure, was in reaction to many districts across the state who were having troubles having schools operate between their substitute teachers, the majority of substitute teachers being in their 60 or above, the number, and so not available, no subs available, the number of people who were calling in sick. It became apparent that schools could not function on a regular basis, and so that was a significant part of her first decision. Yesterday's decision was clearly based on flattening the curve, that it was, the ideas of social distancing was in reaction to the spread of the virus in those, in that week's time of making it to change, actually, five days. So with that, and I can't recall, in your OSBA emails, you probably got a copy or at least a summary of what the executive order was. But in quick summary, as it relates to, one, the date, April 28th. Number two, that the school-state funding will remain intact during this closure. However, to maintain that state school fund, there are five things that all districts have to do. So number one is, I had my list here someplace, I'm winging it. Number one was provide supplementary learning opportunities. Now, with that first statement, we recognize, what is that? We, it was clear from the beginning that all, not all districts have the same resources to offer instruction in the same ways. Some schools have one-to-one devices, some schools live in neighborhoods where everyone has connectivity. So I think part of the discussion we are now going to be starting, and that's why I've asked Mackenzie to speak tonight, because he requested to be a part of the process, was first of all, we need to clarify and be defined by ODE, what is supplementary learning opportunities? Because of those various reasons. Is it, one, we expect that our teachers will develop lesson plans and continue as if we were in school, expecting kids to turn in assignments, to log in, to keep up with the, what was planned, and just basically do things virtually? Or are we in a position where our staff is going to provide online, and if online's not available, analog, if you will, paper and pencil type of activities for those families that don't have internet capabilities or equipment at home? All again through that equity lens. The goal, the major task we have is all kids have the same access to the same material. And the handwriting's on the wall, that's almost impossible to do. So I've put together a committee, it's going to be Friday morning, representing both schools, both principals, and we are going to develop a framework for what our district expectation is. Staff is already, teaching staff have already been notified, we're going in this direction, and so to use their remaining days of these furlough days, if you will, Wednesday, sorry, furlough's probably not a good word to use, these days they've been away from school. Take spring break off if you need to, or you will, but be prepared on March 30th to come back to school in a still-to-be-determined way, whether that would be in shifts or, because we have to keep in mind our 25 or more counts and that type of, and capabilities to everyone get to the same copy machine, all of those logistical things. But the idea is we would come back with a plan initially designed by that team I talked about, and then verified by Colt Gill and his team as early as Monday, so we can finally have a definition of what that supplemental plan is. The second requirement to continue our funding was to provide food service, breakfast and lunch. They have, ODE has done all the labors they can with the federal government to make things as easy as possible. There was a lot of Friday afternoon work that Crystal and Lee did to get us ready to actually have service three days later. But that expectation is to continue throughout the month of April. We have learned already certainly different models of what that looks like, and again, the rules around using buses to transport meals, all those type of variations, doing bus routes, meeting door-to-door, those are all different methods that different school districts are using. So we need to determine a plan by Monday, March 30th, what we will be doing as far as continuing our food service with that. This might be a good time for Crystal to provide updates.
Yeah, it's been changing so fast that by the time we start and get a plan, by, literally by the next day or sometimes within a few hours, the rules have changed. As of Friday at around 7:00 PM, we got our approval to start the summer food service program Monday morning. So Lee and I went in and we applied, did everything we could on our end. At that time, the rules were very different than the rules are now. So if you guys don't know what the summer food service program is, it's very different than what we run during the school year. During the school year, you're probably very used to kids being either free, reduced, paid kids. It's a pretty complicated system. The summer food service program simplifies everything. If you are a child between zero and 18, and you show up, you get a free meal, period. So it's no longer this kid, which we were actually preparing to do Monday originally was to try to get a computer out there and scan kids' names because we thought we were going to have to run the regular program. So by getting the waiver for summer food service, it was wonderful, absolutely wonderful for us and for kids. But as of Friday afternoon, I was being told we were not allowed to run buses to deliver. That would be on us. We were, there was a lot of restrictions. Under the summer food service program, kids have to come to you. So I was asking lots of questions, like, well, if one kid comes and they have a brother at home, can they take two meals? No. It was, even though they opened it up quite a bit, it was still pretty limited for the situation that we're in. And then as of yesterday, rules changed again. They have more waivers, and so now, as of today, we have some additional options. We were originally going to try to open up some more sites. We were able to open Riley Creek up because that was already an approved summer food service site, which we did last summer, so that was really easy to do. Originally, we were looking at maybe opening up a couple more sites. That still required kids to come, and you don't want to run a bus route and put all the kids on one bus because now you've defeated the purpose of what we're doing. So now there are some additional approvals, waivers that have come through. One of them is having bus drivers drive their regular route. There still are some restrictions and, which is, I find to be a little odd that this is the way, you know, this is a federal program. So if our bus drivers were to go out and do the route, and there were three kids at their normal stop, they could hand three lunches. If the other kid was over here and wasn't there, they could not deliver. They could deliver a breakfast and a lunch at the same time, which is what we're doing right now in the summer food service program. That is also something that I've never seen before. So allowing us to do that has been wonderful. The one I'm most interested in right now, but I have yet to connect with Mr. Kitchen, is the home deliveries one, because that opens up some more options for us. We can, excuse me, have families sign up, they have to sign up, and so we would have to look at what that process is, and they could say, I'm a family, this is where I live, and this is how many kiddos are in my household, and I want to sign up for meals. This option, I think, gives us a little bit better idea of how many meals we would need to serve. It also allows us to serve a week of meals at a time if we so chose to, or we could do two days or three days, breakfast and lunch, all at the same time. So right now, I'm sort of leaning towards that one because I think it's the most doable, and it will give us an idea of how much food to actually prepare. Plus, you know, the first day we ran summer food service, I think we had about 27 kiddos show up. That's not a lot, so it might be that they can't get to us. So I'll be sitting down with Mr. Wilson and with Mr. Kitchen and finding out, do we want to continue the program we're running as well as offering this? Or maybe we'll look at just offering this, and anybody who needs food, we will deliver it to you. We don't know what it's going to look like yet, but those are the options that have been opened up and that we hope to have running for the Monday after spring break. So if you guys have any ideas or thoughts on, that I'd be happy to take any of that too, what your thoughts are, what you're hearing in the public that maybe I'm not hearing.
I have a question, Crystal. So you said that 25 kids, that's low.
About 27 kids, yeah.
So would it be considered that over 60% of the student population would be, would benefit from the summer program if they're considered living in poverty?
Every person's free, it doesn't matter.
Right, right. So I'm just saying, like, yeah, if you feel like the population's being served.
We're really not going to know until, unless we do this and we send out things, you know, in every possible way, hey, come to us, fill out this form, tell us what you need. I'm not sure why we didn't have more, other than it was determined, you know, Friday late in the day. I'm not sure why we didn't have more. I didn't get the numbers from today, I couldn't get ahold of Lee. It could be that with, with the chaos that's going on in everyone's family right now, that they just physically can't get there, and that was one of the requirements, they physically had to be there. And so I think that this other option, either alone or in addition to what we're already doing, might be a really good option. If we send it out and we only get five families that want delivery, I don't think that's going to be the case. I would like to think that we're going to get a lot of families that have need and they just maybe can't get to us with that bus and services.
A close comparable, if I may, real quick, Haley. Murrell Point has about 750 kids to our 500. So their superintendent reported that on day one, they had 100, but once the next wave of word got out, they were at 600. So they're serving 75% of their kids in three days of data. Yeah. So I think, I think once we iron out the system, and now we've been given a lot more freedom to make those decisions, now it's again the logistical. And as a part of that, we may be working in our work packets, if you will, if families aren't able to come to school, well, we're going to, we know this is the third, we know this is Mrs. Hugh DeRusso's kid, and we put in their homework goes with that, and that goes along with the lunch, and maybe we do that twice a week. That's, try to blend the two systems together if possible.
My question was what the process is for signing up. Is it? Is it an intensive signup process?
No, we don't have one yet. That's one of the things that we have to, I received it, the information at 4:37 this evening from ODE. It's, let me see. To be approved for home deliveries, please email ODE your plan for contacting families to get parental consent for home deliveries and to determine number of children in the household. We will also need to know the meal types and number of days worth of meals the district plans to deliver to families, as well as the school site from which the meals will be delivered. So it's kind of up in the air. I think it's, depends on your district. So most likely, we'll have it on our website, most likely, we're going to have it on Facebook pages, most likely. We can maybe send, even send something to the radio station.
Robo-call.
Yeah. We're definitely going to try to get this out there. We'll make it absolutely as simple as possible, you know, name of the family.
Where?
Where are you, where are you, and how many kids are?
Even if we have to call every family, we'll.
I think I like the idea, like, oh, God.
Go ahead.
Of home delivery versus writing the routes blind and not knowing if you're going to have, you know, it's targeted and far more efficient.
We would know how many bags of food to put on the bus.
I know we're a little bit informal here, maybe part of this discussion. McKenzie, was there something that you wanted to speak to specifically about? Before I jump to food service, I should have asked you about the planning of the lessons.
He put 7.2 on the card. He did.
Okay.
I was going to call on him eventually.
Okay.
Regarding the technology you referenced.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I guess I was, I was thinking about it as I was walking my dog before I got over here. It seems like, you know, if we could just wave a magic wand and all of our students had devices and internet, like, let's just assume that's not a problem, because that's a whole separate issue. It seems like that question of, is it supplementary or is it part of school, is a huge issue. Like, if it's supplementary, sure, you know, teachers can get together and get the word out and have these activities to do. But it seems like even if everyone had a device and connectivity, if we were grading students, you know, they needed to log in as themselves and turn in assignments as themselves, and teachers are, you know, assigning a grade for the work that they're doing, you know, we're, I don't even know how that would work exactly. K-12. You know, there's a few options, but even, like, how would, we're having trouble even getting kids to know that there's free food available. Like, how are we going to get them to know what their login is for some online program? And then if they are stuck and they don't know, they can't remember their password, you know, it just seems like that would be a huge jump for our district to be able to, you know, say that this is required work that you need to do K-12. You know, I'm like, what are, you know, kindergartners going to do really online, you know, and are their parents going to email? I don't know. It just seemed like that's like a huge question for us. The supplementary, like, in, as an enrichment, sure, like, I could see us as a district being able to provide that with what we have, and maybe kids come in and do additional things. But if we're, but I don't know, that's like not really our decision.
One of the early guiding points was guiding principles. Again, there's that equity lens, making sure all kids have access to whatever you're going to do. But the other part was very strongly underlined and bolded. If you don't have experience in managing online systems, don't start now, because of the very point, McKenzie should. So we need to find our middle ground, if you will. So that was, we're good for that. And then food service, we discussed that. The third thing?
I just had a quick question.
Oh, please.
Sorry to interrupt you. My understanding is accurate, or is it accurate, that there's no food service during spring break?
That's correct. That is correct. That's our current plan. That seems to be a community-by-community decision. It's not a part of our normal operations to offer meals during breaks. So in its place, Snack Pack program has did a double or triple dose.
So there is something.
There are, yeah. And they've identified their students that they normally give them to, to come to the Riley Creek, I think it was on Friday afternoon.
Can also provide Snack Pack. That was one of the questions I asked today, was if we have an active Snack Pack program as we're delivering meals, you know, this is from the district for your three kids for three days, we can also hand a Snack Pack. If Snack Pack wants to continue on their program, we can do them simultaneously.
Yeah, that's all I was emphasizing. My hope would be that throughout next week, there would still be something available for kids. I think people are getting robo-called. I mean, especially families around here right now.
Another question. Is Snack Pack just still at Riley Creek, or do the high school students?
We also do the high school. Any student who needs one, it's announced every week that they can get one. And rough numbers are about 110 at Riley Creek and about 20 at the high school. Tina, is that about right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And I guess I'll just follow that up with, are we looking at a plan for getting word out better about food that's available, so that it's not just an exercise, but makes an impact?
Yeah, I'd be interested to see how numbers have changed since the first day. But yes, obviously, that's our intended goal.
I'd be willing to call, I'd be willing to call all 330 of our students.
I mean, have we done like a robo-call like that?
We have not yet.
That's allowable to be able to do something like that, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. But now I think we, what we need to do is make sure we're, what program we're going to offer, and the best way to do that. And so in that question, if you will, and if it's Tina or whoever office staff we designate, ask them the question, do you want to be a part of the food service? Do you have a computer, do you have computer or internet access? So we ask those three basic, ask those three basic questions so that we can now make our plans universal. Yes?
I know there has been, like, some effort, like, I saw the South Coast Early Learning Hub, and like, people have been sharing the information about where to get meals. And so the continuation of what we have been doing in addition to a new program, I think, would be a good idea, because a lot of people probably already have heard.
Well, I hope so, but I was, I'm surprised there were only 27 kids there. And as much of, we did everything minus the robo-call that first day. And again, I'm hoping that we at least had some increase over the last couple of days. Any more on food service?
I think the delivery often, yeah, of bringing it to people's homes is pretty huge, especially the circumstances, the people supposed to be staying at home, so.
Great, thank you. The third item was around childcare. And the childcare was specifically that schools should make the facilities available, if possible, to provide daycare for first responders and medical hospital staff who are. So the way it was phrased this morning in our meeting was, some districts are going to be asked to do that. I assume that's the suburban and urban districts. I think at some point, once we can identify our local, and again, once we get some more direction, we're currently not set up as a daycare. So yes, we have a classroom, but do we have all of the developmental activities and the staff and all of those things? At this point, I would say no. So that's part of the next step on directives on how significant that, will that happen in Gold Beach? I don't know yet. But it is, if directed, we will have to provide that service. The fourth one, I can't remember because I got distracted. But the fifth one was, was a definition, was a reconfirmation that all of our employees in the school districts are being paid without any loss of wage. That are the schools, the state school fund was budgeted that way and would remain that way. Many of the questions we're getting from employees, from our staff members are, do we have to make this up? Or, that's a big question. There is an issue between, issues probably not, there are differences between the license, who are in 190-day contract, whatever 190 days we determine, that's when they work. Classified are hourly. And even though their salary is amortized over a whole year so that they have equal payments throughout the year, they're actually being paid by the hour per month, and then adjustments are made. So with that said, I had to identify essential skill, sorry, essential staff to work this week. And so I determined that to be custodians, food service, payroll, and payroll only, and a couple days of accounting to pay the bills to make sure those are out on time, that we do every Friday. No one else in the district was required to work, but they were all paid. And so you quickly see the challenge of, we have a group of six people, seven people, eight people, who are working versus 75 people who are at home being paid, not working. So we quickly, on Friday afternoon, did a memo of understanding with our classified unit and our confidential employees that are impacted, determined as essential, had a rate change for this week of one, a 1.5 rate, so that they were, if you will, getting compensated for their work as essential employees. When we come back to work on March 30th, everyone is going to be expected to come back to work. But it might look different, again, based on, and that's what the fifth bullet, if you will, was that you can assign staff to do a variety of things. Now, I'm not saying we're going to have, bring all of our teachers aides and have them put on rubber gloves and scrub desktops, but that, that could be. Or bus drivers, the same thing. My challenge and my, what I had to get ready before March 30th is the idea that we have, with the classified folks coming back, we have to have an equitable system that all are being still paid their normal pay, but also have some, no one, one group will get more hours than the other. That makes sense? So as an example, if I determine that 10 hours is what we want all classified people to do, then we will schedule those, all the classified folks to come and work 10 hours during the week, including custodians. Only 10 hours of custodians, 10 hours of IA, but we might have teachers assistants doing food service if they have food. That type of flexibility is what the fifth part of the governor's order was. Obviously, we're not going to have someone who's not licensed drive a bus, but we could have bus drivers come in and do tasks that they could do. So that will be evolving in the next couple of days. That was the key takeaways from Colt's message. If you go to the ODE site, oh, sorry, before I had to go to that, as the meeting is going on, hundreds of more questions are coming up around a variety of things that, that some are bargain related or unit contractual issues versus can we still plan to have a graduation? There are some of those questions that are in the public arena right now that is still too early to determine. So, but what is remaining consistent is this, that we will be meeting twice a week throughout the next six weeks. We meetings, the superintendents, continually have updates to provide feedback to ODE. Their response then is on a FAQ sheet. If you go to oregon.gov/ode, they have a FAQ, a frequently asked questions list by category, and that's where, that's where we're getting our guidance. It talks about, will we still have state testing, the smarter ballots, will there be sports, can groups still use your facilities, I mean, every type of a possible question. And then there were still people today asking questions that were new to the process, because we're living in the moment as things are changing. So I've tried to reemphasize that with any communication that I sent to staff, obviously I'm CCing all of you as well, that just be prepared that this might change. This is today's plan. We're doing our best with the information we have to move forward. But this is unprecedented, and we're just going to do our best to serve our kids, serve our community, and make sure everyone is staying healthy. So that was a long-winded way to give you an update on our school closure situation. Yes?
I've got another question, sorry. But regarding the, for the bullets, number three, that childcare for the first responders, does that have to be an employee of the school district?
That could be a way that we would, right now, we were asked if we have the facilities to offer that service.
I was just wondering, I, this came to mind, and I don't know if she's, and I, this was something that.
I think the spirit of it is to make, to ensure that hospital staff aren't out already because they're home taking their, their trip.
Right, right.
Things like that, or if, if we do start seeing cases cropping up here and stuff like that. So making sure that regardless of whether the person's a district employer or not, that those people are available.
Okay, thank you.
And the one, the one question I asked him earlier today was, and I think we touched on it, was what are we going to do with all the school days, the instructional days we're missing? And as of right now, there's not going to be a makeup period. That's what everything else, subject to change, I'm sure.
So, yes, and I will be, and I actually put some of those, thank you, I did put some of that in my blue notes, too. So if we had just had seven days of closure, which is now a moot point, but we have a four-day cushion, if you will, for emergencies built into our calendar already as far as the number of minimum required hours for instruction for a student contact time. We had a four-day buffer. So if you figure we had seven days of non-instruction, then we, my plan was to take the first graduation on Friday night, on June 5th. The following week was meant to be teacher in-service for four days. Three of those would become instructional days, one day of teacher, work day, get grades done, you're done. Again, that's all about moot. So the, so that's where we are right now. The State Board of Education is meeting tomorrow. It's, I'm sure going to be a significant part of their discussion is around the waiver process. And Colt Gill said that he would, he's the one that approves waivers. He would be asking the State Board on behalf of all 191 school districts about this particular topic. We've seen, and then seeing the news every day as things progress, again, California might be close to staying schools, staying schools done for the year. I would think Washington might be considering. So there is that inevitability. We'll just have to wait and see. Thank you for reminding that.
You're welcome. All right, let's move on to other topics. Calendar, 8.0.
Okay, so we have A and B, and then a summary sheet of what the two differences are. And this would be an update from your February meeting, what was updated, and then again, confirmed and shared with both, with the labor associations, that the last week of school, if we're looking at proposal A, in proposal A, this would be starting school the week before Labor Day on August 31st, and school finishing on June the 9th. What was here last time was school ending on June the 4th. And what we did in order to have better use of our professional development days, we moved January 7th and January 8th to become full-day professional developments on February 26th and May 7th. So now the, as it stands, school would start on So now, as it stands, school would start on August 31st and end on a half-day of June The B proposal, the B proposal, has us starting the traditional Tuesday after Labor Day, September the 8th, finishing in that same model on June 16th, on a half-day. The other adjustment we made with B, because of the placement of Veterans Day being right in the middle of the week, the proposal B has the first grading period being eight weeks long rather than the traditional nine. And so that would better align for parent-teacher conferences the first week of November. Two other items for you to consider as you have your discussion. One, I did confirm that both Port Orford and Brookings are starting August 31st. Number two, might be a moot point at this point there, but that idea, if, and it still could happen, not to the idea that we need to make up 20 days of school, but if the governor does come back and extend the school year, let's say, just for discussion, a week, so we go until June 12th or June 17th this year, that would mean there would be less of a summer break, if you will, as you consider the beginning of the school year. Those are, one supports the August 31st meeting countywide, the other one supports the idea we may have a longer June 2020, and having a traditional start might be to our year advantage as well. And in conclusion, again, the associations showed no difference, no significant difference in their choices. It'll be to you, or us. You. I am, I am available for questions or guidance at your discretion.
I'm kind of torn. I mean, I, I'm on record as big liking school starting after Labor Day, maybe just as a matter of tradition, but I do recognize the fact that June 16th is pretty late into the , into the summer, into June, yes.
And, I'm sorry, I didn't say there was one more point. September of '21, so the year after this one would be a September 7th start.
Oh, okay, so we, it's pretty much the same.
The same kind of discussion, yeah.
Is there any benefit of being on the same schedule as like districts or close districts?
We haven't done a lot of activities together.
Even though athletically, we're in different leagues, you know, things like that, there's not necessarily a vital import to it, however, in such a way. One thing that this is making all of us consider, I think, is that as we consider the implications of larger, larger scenarios like this one on our tiny little portion of the state over here in the corner, and one thing that it does bring up is if we were on similar schedules and we were trying to coordinate, maybe sort of an inter-agency support network or something like that, having similar schedules would have a benefit there, but is that?
That really only impacts two weeks.
I was going to say, it's really, yeah.
Because we could coordinate things all rest of the year.
Exactly.
Except for the beginning and the end. Many, I do know that Reevesport, as another coastal tourism town, voted to start September 8th. So there's no consistency up and down the coast. That doesn't help either.
What's the push, I guess, it just seems like the last two or three school years, maybe, this seems to keep coming up, and I guess what's, where's that coming from?
I think from an educator's standpoint, quite frankly, the quality of instruction and attention after Memorial Day becomes more of a challenge. That's, that's what I hear from most teachers as the only concern with going later.
My counter, I guess, I question too, I guess, starting earlier, like on the 31st, you have a four-day week and then a four-day weekend.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of a swapping of evils to me a little bit. I mean, is that a productive four days to almost reset when you get back on Monday again?
I've been in other districts where this has occurred, and it's up to the, you know, administration of the schools to make those first four days meaningful. In essence, I don't know if, another view might be, and again, for me, I just go on the record, it doesn't matter, obviously, to me, as either, but as a parent, I think I recall that most kids and most parents are ready for school to begin as soon as possible. So again, but that shouldn't sway your decision on starting in August versus September, because there would be just as many people that would say, we've always started after Labor Day, and let's, we have family traditions, and that's just the way it is. I would tell you that probably we would have our first athletic events on September 4th, that week before Labor Day, we would have already started a season, but we've already had, in my time here, we've already had games before school began. So that's not a, that would not be a new, a new item.
Right, yeah, the practice usually starts.
Yeah, right, yeah. So there are traditionally games before Labor Day.
If this coronavirus scenario really does evolve and we end up missing the rest of the school year, I see a benefit to starting earlier, getting kids back in school earlier.
I agree, because there'll be that huge lapse time, if we don't have to make, if the governor decides not to make it up. There could be a large lapse time there between classes.
I don't know, I just looked at the, at the district office, and as a district that tends to get audited in late August, on proposal A, you're going to have teachers back, especially payroll, they tend to provide a lot of data to our staff and have to have all that ready, and you're hitting right at the time she's going to be doing payroll. So that might be a little bit of a challenge for us, as well as with the audit, we'll probably, I'm assuming they're going to try to hit me somewhere in the 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st.
Of August.
Of August. I'm just guessing at that, I don't have the final dates. That's going to be, it will be a challenge for our office to be able to have the teachers back, to be able to provide what we normally provide.
What are the dates? I know we have this in front of us.
Sure.
Is it something we have to, we need to make the decision on before we have any more information? I mean, some of the proposals might meet better on an A or a B, and I hear what you're saying, Crystal, I was thinking if they had to add the extra days on, then the other might look better, but if they don't, then of course, you know, you kind of have a guessing game, I guess.
Sure. I, you all know this community better than I, and so I'll respond in this way. There are some families that make vacation plans one or two years ahead of time. Can't imagine doing that, but some do. And so they like having as, as far as advanced notice as possible. Now, under the circumstance that we're in, it might behoove you to wait until April to see if anything changes with the current school year, if you feel that's going to impact your decision here. The only other thing that comes to mind is, as we're interviewing new employees and asking, and we're advertising, we're saying the approximate starting date, right now we put is August 31st, meaning that would be the first day that, we're taking the traditional calendar right now as our mode of operation, the B, until it gets changed to A. So again, we may have more information by April 15th if the pandemic will extend our school year or end it, and then maybe that would give you enough information to move forward.
I move to approve proposal B as the calendar for the 2020-21 academic school year.
By chair leading the charge, I like it.
I mean, we're talking about a whole week here, kind of the difference in the schedules start.
Four days.
What's that?
Four days.
Yeah, it's kind of like, you get it going, and something does change, and I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Questions, comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed? All right, B it is.
Proposal B, thank you very much.
Okay, 8.2, budget calendar.
I'll actually defer, Ms. Carpenter on that.
This is your cream. This has simply just been updated from last year, so the dates are like one or two days off, and that's just because the way the calendar falls. I think more important than even this calendar is that right now we have four openings on the Budget Committee, so if you guys know of anyone that might be interested, that could just zap me a quick email and say they're interested.
We have four, is it four or five, that means?
Yes. You, five, and then there are five other members.
We need at least three at a minimum on that side to have a quorum?
No, we need, we need six out of the 10 to have a quorum.
Oh, okay. Doesn't matter which pool they come from.
Can you, can you update me if I?
Actually, I don't, I'll have to pull those numbers again, but I don't believe it's an issue. I believe you try to get as many, and if you end up with eight, then it's, then eight is your budget, and you would need five, for example. But I will double-check on that, I check it every year, because those rules are a little different, but, but we do have several openings. We have one that maybe will come back, I will, I will speak to her. So with what's going on right now, I would like these to be our planned, targeted, hopeful dates, if that's okay with you guys. There could be a chance that we may need to back this up a little bit, depending on what goes on between now and the end of May.
Is that tutorial, we need to have it done by June 30, right?
Well, the Budget Committee needs two minutes and approve it, and then the School Board needs to adopt it by June 30. So there's a lot of play in this calendar, I guess, is what I'm saying. If we, if our first Budget Committee meeting, we're thinking is May 27th, and that doesn't happen, and we need to move it back a week, as long as we have enough time to advertise it that way, and you see the advertising timelines up, that I, we have those on here, we can do that. This is the, this is the goal right now.
I have no objection to any of those dates. They are the traditional ones we've done for the last few years. Any others?
Crystal, you have no interest? I mean, there was, is anybody?
I just sent it to Teresa to put in the newspaper, and I didn't see if it made the last one. I know we're going to put it in for three weeks, I've requested it go in the newspaper for three weeks, but today might have been the first day.
Yeah, and I didn't check.
So we did request that it go in the, in the newspaper for three weeks, but what I find is that word of mouth tends to be better in this district, and what I like to tell people is if you're considering at all maybe being on the school board at some point in time, this is a really good place to start. It kind of gets your foot in the door, gets you looking at the numbers and looking at some data, and just kind of seeing how we're structured, so it's a good place to start.
And you want them just to email you?
Yes, that'd be great. It could be two sentences.
Or round up the volunteers somewhere, willing or not.
I move to approve the 2020-21 budget calendar as presented.
Second?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Calendar approved. Okay, 8.3, Mr. Gordon Clay, and House 4.
As an introduction, please, Gordon, as you're, yeah, I'd like to introduce Gordon. Gordon is the chairman of the Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council, of which I was also appointed to be a member. In our brief two meetings we've had, it's certainly brought a higher level of awareness around this topic in our community, and I have no doubts, as I've been reflecting over the last few days, our new normal of social distancing, I always see mental health becoming even more of a severe issue as we prepare, you know, just socially, you know, we're told to be closed in, and now we're going to have to come back and learn how to work together and all that. So any, any proclamations of support around mental health, I think, are vital for any board. The city of Gold Beach and the Curry County Commissioners have already approved this proclamation, so I invite now Mr. Clay to speak to it as well.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Gordon Clay, Chair of the Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council, Brookings, Oregon. Question, what are boys less likely to do than girls? Well, lots of things. The boys have been brought up in a culture of stuff to stuff feelings. Big boys don't cry, handle it, don't ask for help, man up, and the messages go on. So when it comes to self-injury, they go no. Why should we be concerned? People often keep it a secret, but the urge to self-injure isn't uncommon. Over 2 million Americans currently engage in self-injury. While the target groups are adolescents and young adults, people of all ages practice self-injury. Myth, one of the misconceptions is that only females do it. While girls 14 to 17 are hospitalized four times more often than boys, 30 to 40% of people who self-injure are males, with the highest segment being white male adolescents. Self-injury means hurting yourself on purpose. For boys, the most common method is hitting themselves or an object like a wall, or cigarette burns. The most common among girls is cutting with a sharp object, or pulling out hair, or picking at wounds to prevent healing. Myth, people who self-injure enjoy the pain or can't feel it. Self-injury most often hurts. Sometimes feeling the pain is the whole point, to reconnect with their own body or just to feel something. Myth, self-injury is untreatable. Although it can be difficult to control or stop, most people are able to stop at some point. Because it's most often used as a coping mechanism, however, the practice typically does not stop until the individual has other means and methods to cope, and is fully ready to stop. Myth, self-injury is a suicide attempt. Most studies find that self-injury is often undertaken as a means to avoid suicide. What is important to get a handle on before it gets a pattern of well-established, since 70% of those with a history of self-injury have attempted suicide at least once. Myth, there's nothing I can do. There are many ways that you can help. The easiest is by just listening and being as supportive and understanding as you can. Most importantly, don't give up. Instead of scolding or looking down on someone for doing this, just let them know that you care. March is Self-Injury Awareness Month, so this is a time to learn more at zeroattempts.orgselfinjury.html. On a slightly different subject, some people in the world, in your world, might be feeling anxious, be feeling physically unwell, or concerned about their well-being. At a time when we are being asked to physically distance ourselves from one another, you can definitely be a listening ear and a virtual shoulder to lean on. When you connect, listen closely to what you're hearing from people, and are they posting more or less? Are they answering your calls? Are they communicating as you would expect? Trust your gut and ask, are you okay? Listening with an open mind, ask them what you can do to help. Don't let them isolate. If you or someone you care about is in crisis and you think immediate action is needed, text SOS. text SOS to 741-741, contact your doctor or Mental Health Crisis Services, or go to your local emergency room. And what I'd like to speak for just a moment is that be sure, because your kids are going, many of them are going back into an environment that is not safe. It is a very difficult environment. I was just with, uh, Winnie Lang on what they're doing with probation and all. These kids not being in school, they're forced back into a very dangerous and difficult environment. And for the kids that are being seen by the, the therapists from CCH, I hope you're connecting with them to be sure that CCH is doing something to continue that visit, uh, be it on the phone or whatever. But those kids, it's vital in this particular situation, we're gonna see more difficulty than less because of what's happening and more stress and that kind of stuff. So really, we gotta take care of everybody, but really take care of the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
So at your tables, you have a copy in gray of the proposed proclamation. Someone wants to read that or?
The volunteers.
Whereas two million Americans currently engage in self-injury with methods like cutting, scratching, bruising, and hitting themselves, along with other more harmful methods. And whereas self-injury is used when individuals are unable to handle intense feelings, and so they turn to self-injury as a way to express their feelings and emotions. And whereas self-injury can start at any age, but most people who starts, whose self-injure started puberty. And whereas self-injury ranges from 12% to 37% in adolescents and 12% to 20% in young adult populations. And whereas the incidence of self-injury is highest amongst white male adolescents. And whereas 70% of those with a history of self-injury have attempted suicide at least once and is highest during the first six months after an episode. And whereas those who self-injure report that they want, that once they've started, it is hard to stop and that they feel like self-injury takes over their lives. And whereas the need to break down the common stereotypes around self-injury and to educate parents and medical professional, medical and educational professionals about the condition. And whereas to increase awareness of self-injury is a public health issue that needs to be taken seriously. Now, therefore, the Central Curry School District One Board of Directors hereby proclaims March 2020 as Self-Injury Awareness Month. Be it further resolved, the council encourages all citizens to be informed on the warning signs and address, and address the issue with our youth.
Thank you, Mr. Mensters. Yes, thank you. I move to approve the proclamation of Self-Injury Awareness Month as presented.
I'll second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Proclamation adopted and approved. Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Thank you. Are we still planning to meet on April 1st or would that be? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, eight point four. Presentation of Students Investment Account Draft Application.
Does anybody need a break? This could be a little bit of an activity. Are we good to go?
I would get some water.
Five minutes. Chick, I thought we'll, we'll recess for five minutes. Peter?
Uh, actually, um...
7:20, Peter, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Not 25.
No, uh, everything that's in your packet.
I gotta read them.
And that I, this doesn't work as, so to answer your question, stay here. If McKinsey wants to see some, some of the documents, I can share that. Okay, are we ready?
All right, yes, we are.
All right, so a little, little bit of a preface that again I've, I put into your blue packet. Do over some of the ground rules. And as again, as it relates to s, uh, school closure, there are, a lot of the questions are based around extending the deadline for this. You can foresee the challenges that that would potentially cause if we continued to delay, 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 as far as how budgets are prepared, as far as hiring people. I mean, we're not Salem Kaiser, but they're gonna hire 200 people. They can't do that and wait, you know? So with that said, I believe what's gonna come out is do whatever you have that is ready on April 15th. So if we're not 90, if we're 80% there, turn in what you have and then update us. But with that said, the law says we do have to submit and the board has to approve before April 15th. Before April 15th. We have a board meeting on April 15th. We couldn't do it that night and push the button, that would be too late. Okay? So, um, what I have for you tonight is a little bit of updated since what I sent out to you Sunday morning. A lot of those yellow things that I still had to work, I've already got in. So this is updated. And any of my responses, um, are in italics. The only thing that's left, uh, as far as the application is completing some data on section four, um, and then the actual plan. I would appreciate your word, word spitting, going through the document. As an example, Kaylee today reminded me that it's the Oregon Fish and Wildlife, not US to show up. So if there are particular things in the narratives that you either have questioned, you don't understand it, because if you, if you don't understand it, certainly then, you know, I want ODE to understand some of the BS I put, no, some of the, some of the, as you can see, the, the questions, they keep asking just a little different way. So it's, it's hard to be creative in that sense. Now, um, I know the, the formatting looks a little weird, but another one of the quirks of this, the actual application is, it's gonna be a Google form that I basically have to cut and paste, and I would get one attempt to put everything in. So it's not like you can put in some, come back and save it and do it. It's all in one sitting. So the major bulk of our work tonight is related to the what? The plan. This is all of the, did you do your community engagement? How did you engage them? What lessons did you learn about engagement? How do you plan to do future engagement? This is at, the application confirms that you use an equity lens and ask certain questions to, as you would prove. So that, that's the regulatory. What I'm asking you to do tonight is to meat and potatoes. So again, to remind you on the process, uh, you will see, there are four, the four buckets, remember our four buckets from before? There was instructional time, class size, health and safety, and then well-rounded education. So you have, you have in your packet those four items. At the top of each, of one of, of that, first are the results from our survey. Okay? And then second would be ideas that have been generated that fit those categories. These ideas have come from staff, from administration, from students. Remember that we, our charge is to develop a three-year plan. So as we go through this process, your primary task is to help the administration, uh, with your input prioritize what our public says through community engagement and what makes sense to make as our priorities. Knowing in Plan B of that is that if we have a priority item that cannot be fulfilled, i.e. counselor or something like that, that we would have a backup plan that would, and be in the spirit of that request and/or have a, as a, a, another couple of items that would fill in on the budget. Now, the numbers you have in front of you are rough, are rough, are estimates to the best we can, but, uh, Crystal shared with me yesterday the challenge, um, when we're talking about personnel. A person coming right out of school who is single and takes the cheapest insurance will cost us $65,000. A person who comes with a master's plus 15, 10 years' experience and has a family of five, the most expensive, and is a member of PERS versus OPSER, they're gonna cost us 110. So there has to be some flexibility and of course, the frustration is we have to put this plan in by April 15th, knowing that this is our best guess of what we want, but we may need to make some adjustments accordingly. So as I've been thinking through the best way to do this process, uh, and again, McKinsey has, uh, requested to be a, a resource, um, specifically around some technology items. And again, I welcome his opinion as, in a, in many, in many ways, but, um, here's what I've, I'm thinking about the process. Hopefully you all have had a chance to, well, first of all, Crystal, are there any updates we should consider, just use this as our template?
Yeah, I had some, you know, like, uh, classified age at about 20,000.
Okay.
But there, I, I had some other numbers to add in here, but there, once again, until we get into really the massive bulk, but it's a very broad...
So one of our conditions as well, why you see some blanks, one, uh, some of those are I, more on the idea side that need more fleshing out? Flushing or fleshing, I'm not sure. Flesh, actually, fleshing. But I didn't wanna go down that road if you weren't interested. As an example, one of the items under health and safety is replace the high school heater system. Okay? If we're not interested, because aside conversation is, how much money do you invest using this money for something that potentially, potentially with a new building that might occur for five or six or seven years from now? How much money do you invest in this building? That's a perfect example of trying to prioritize, not that having a, a, a reliable working heating system is not important, that should be number one, but is the expense of doing that weighed up against the other priorities really truly a priority? Does that make sense, everybody? Okay. So, um, I, I in thinking this through, um, maybe, Andy, you're welcome to facilitate this, but that idea of shall we, shall each of the board members or just in conversation verify what things become, what really truly are the priorities? Do you ver, do you, um, approve of what our public has said? Put those items up there first, maybe we, maybe as we go through all four lists, we, I could write them up on the board, um, what those would be. Our magic number is 432,000.
I was, I was lost in number one.
And right now, that's 432,000 times three. Will there be a 1% increase in year two or a 2% inflationary? We don't have that info, so we're planning on 432 times three. Okay? And that's based on our weighted ADMW with an extra weight for homeless. Okay? So the 432,000, that's how that number came up. So if you're good with that plan, maybe a couple minutes for you to verify, if you need more time, or I can go right to the board and let's just start identifying, um, which one of these are your priorities? And then we kind of keep a running tally using these estimate numbers. And then maybe we develop a secondary list after that and then a tertiary list if we get to the, the third list.
Remind me again how much, how much we can concentrate in one particular bucket over?
It doesn't matter.
You can go 100% in one?
Yeah. So one of the other things to think about, um, and again, it's part of this flexibility that the one demonstration about what a person costs. The rhetorical question is, knowing the needs that we have people-wise, um, is this the year to, because everyone's gonna be looking for a counselor, everyone's gonna be looking for mental health therapists, everyone's gonna be looking for a nurse. Is this the year that you acknowledge those needs in some way? But then, and, and use your funds less on people and more on things versus putting all your money into people? And then having a, a plan that is secondary that would, if you don't hire these people, then these would be the things we do. Right? It's so, that's probably the best guidance I can give you. And maybe I, and so now I've, I'm gonna stop talking. But I, but I will say this, that, uh, we are currently advertising for an elementary counselor. Yeah. So are we at a point right now I can go to the board?
Yeah. Yeah, feel free.
Sorry, it's not the best car, yes, or other, yes.
Can we talk just a little about balance and why that's important? We've been talking about this for a kind of a long time. When, when this money comes in, especially like this first year, then the next five, we're not sure what we're gonna get. We've had a lot of conversations about being really mindful of balancing, in other words, not doing all employees or all other things because, for example, we, we know there's a need, I would assume that we all agree that we need a full-time counselor at Riley Creek. Okay? That's very important. But if we put almost all of the plan in people, maybe those ongoing costs, the funds may not be there for the rate increase that we have in personnel costs, is what I'm saying. So try, try to be mindful, maybe balancing the full-time costs with one-time costs. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll start. I mean, I, a full, and I've said for a full-time counselor at Riley Creek and another, another full-time teaching physician at Riley Creek in the 3-5, I've kind of been at the top of my list all along, and from a personnel side. To have the opportunity to keep the class size reasonable for every class and not have this balloon class of 30 some odd kids that we end up with scattered somewhere in the middle school.
Another full-time teacher is definitely the very top.
So let me speak to that just for a moment, and I think I did, um, someplace. Yeah, and on the notes of reducing class size or class loads. With Mrs. Zubers retirement, we currently have six teachers in the middle school wing. Our plan is to absorb her position with other people taking parts of her position. So her FTE, if you will, um, in part is, we currently have 10, 10, 11? We currently have 10. We know we have a large second grade coming up that has 50 kids in it, so we know we're gonna already add an extra. So that ex, first extra is Mrs. Zubers FTE replacement. That still leaves one blended class. We'd have two Ks, two ones, two twos, two thirds, two, a fourth, a four-five blend, something like that. By taking Andy's suggestion, putting up, we now would have two per grade level, K5.
Which was our perfection model, if I remember correctly, on our enrollment.
Uh, one thing, Tim, isn't, Jean's position is not full-time, it's like six tenths, right? So that would have to be paid for out of this, so you'd be adding like one and six tenths of a position out of this?
Something, no, because we also have, um, the, Mrs. Rhodes as the counselor, halftime counselor. Her half plus part of, parts of Jean make up the one.
We're mixing it up.
Right, so you only, only have that.
Which is always fun in the class.
Yes, yes. Jean right now is, for, for rounded numbers, is three-quarter. And, and Sidney is... Jean right now is, for rounded numbers, is three-quarter, and Sydney is .39 or .4. Put those together, it's about 1.1.
Sure.
Yeah, and then we, but we do need to, we have, we have three classes that we have, we have planned assignments for that aren't publicly announced yet, but we'll be able to with this have two per grade level.
And as far as the elementary teacher, just FYI, we have been advertising for an elementary teacher slash teachers. And I believe as of yesterday, we do not have seen that.
And just to throw in one more item, because of the social distancing, all of the teacher fairs are canceled. So when we would be able to go to Portland and get 20 applicants in one afternoon, that's gone. Ashland's done, yeah, Western's done. So it's really going to be our general out internet search type people. Any, we probably have to do some very assertive, direct meetings as soon as the colleges figure out how they're going to function in the spring term, but we probably would behoove us to say, hey, we're going to, on a Friday afternoon, we're going to have a meeting at the student union at Western and invite any elementary candidates. That's, that's going to have to be that one-to-one type of recruiting.
Do we have any in-house candidates or people that have worked with aides or people that are getting their teacher's degrees or anything like that?
Not at this point.
No.
But yeah, I know we do have a couple that fit that category.
Yeah, I was just curious if that was, if that category was.
Okay, so we have those two on the board. Other things that have come up and some priorities for you?
Tech, technology, how that manifests itself is a good question. You know, where, where is it going to be most effective? Where are we going to get the most bang for our buck? That's a good question.
Okay, so in this category, you can see we do have an estimate using the tablets at the 6 through 12 level. That idea of increasing one at each building would bring us pretty close to a two-to-one ratio of machines to kids. And that's using current numbers that we, that we paid for for this year.
And that, is that something that would be at the top of the wish list, so to speak, in terms of priorities?
It was the top of the kids list. I think if, this was not planned, but our current school closure implementations, implements that having some type of a, an online presence, whatever that looks like, we're not at the point obviously where we can do one-to-one. There are sub-districts that do that, but we're not quite there yet as teachers to know how to use. And that's part of this idea as well, that, that we would provide professional development around how you use instructional technology to enhance your instruction on a day-to-day. We have some teachers that do it very naturally and others are not there yet. So the technology is, are you hearing, is this a number you're looking at or?
No, I just, I mean, I know it's something that needs our attention.
So should I just put?
Yeah, I was just going to add on the, from the tech committee's perspective, I think the tech, the last tech committee meeting, there was a discussion of like, well, what, what could the, our district technology, what could it like for programming? New tablets, resources, and I think that discussion for that number was like, well, what is that? And I think that the committee was going to come back next month and maybe look at some of that, right? What could, what could they look at in terms of projects, you know, that would best suit the district? $5,000 came up as a, right, that was a, you know, for.
I think that was, we were talking about like putting aside year-to-year pay for replacements.
That was for the continual maintenance and replacement.
But I think a lot of the infrastructure costs, we're taking care of.
Right, and I think like infrastructure, as far as our infrastructure, we're ready for 60 tablets, sort of be two-to-one, 6 through 12, easily. I mean, but then of course, that ignores K5s who have no, nothing other than the computer labs. So, you know, I think it's such a huge hole to fill, this would be a start.
So what other thing to think of, if you will, if we're all being, trying to be fair and equitable? 3-5 is getting another teacher. I mean, so yes, I'm not ignoring the fact that, that K5 kids need access to technology as well. But we have proven success, the tablets are preferred and usable.
You can also rotate this money every year.
We could do K5.
You start with a high school, and the next year you can do K5, and the next year you could do 6-8, and you could rotate a dollar amount if you wanted to.
Oh, we've got, we've got $282,000 left to spend.
Which number are you, what number are you using? Are you using the 75,000?
For both, yeah. Is that, is that a fair?
Why don't we go middle, why don't we go 85?
Okay.
It totally depends on the applicant pool.
So we'll.
This is why we also need contingent sort of items.
Right, right.
What does it mean by increased use of technology and like CTE, including wood tech and construction, CAD and manufacturing?
So this year we added the digital arts lab. And so that this person's idea was to increase its use beyond that one class in yearbook and to have students who were enrolled in construction and woodworking to now have access to CAD and some other design programs.
So it'd be software basically?
I like where you're heading with that. I have a question about the program, our woods, metals program. So the infrastructure over there, how, I forgot how those buildings are doing. I remember there was a discussion once, and I don't list it in here for infrastructure, but like the roof, the wood shop.
The roof on the wood shop is continuing to leak. It, it would need a replacement to repair the leaks, and then the heating system in the metal shop doesn't work, so.
So those are items that are included.
Yeah, makes for very cold winter months.
And how much longer can the, basically the roof kind of go before it's?
An estimate I had to take care of its current condition but not fully replaced was $60,000.
I think his question was more though, like how survivable is it? I don't know that we're in an immediate danger situation, we haven't seen any indication that.
We put five gallon buckets for a couple leaks on heavy nine-inch dais.
Yeah, but we haven't seen any indication that things are ready to collapse necessarily. But that being said, water dripping down a shop full of electrical equipment, not a great mix either.
So that, I mean, that one could be, I mean, I've got a couple like construction type things that we could, you know, throw a secondary column potentially, and that could be one of them.
And I'm curious about that Scott, is this a program or just that that's something that our district has? It's very beneficial to our district.
I was thinking how to enhance some of that.
Right, right, I think that's a good way to look at it.
Is everybody okay with having some tech on the primary?
Okay. Do you want to attach, you want to come back and put a number in later?
I don't know if I wasn't paying attention, but do we have a number of like how a technology plays into our technology plan? Is that what we were talking about?
Yeah, so part of the technology, yeah, instructional plan, and I think maybe this is what Luke was referring to. If, if there was X amount of dollars set aside, what would be the best way to outfit? And but like a lot, Crystal's mind as well, maybe this year it's 912 because the high, actually the middle school just got a card from the foundation and student body fund, so they just got one. The high school has one unit. And so if, even if you recruit, increase each by one, in this proposal, I think it's increasing by three. So the high school would have two and Riley Creek would have, but in that result would be three and three, I think. Is that right? Yeah, three and three.
If we were to just two for the high school.
Right, that's, that's the proposal here of the 48,000s. Would have grade six through, so we would have 60 units for 95 kids at Riley Creek. We would have 60 units for 145 kids over here, plus a lab, plus a computer lab, which are also, plus a digital arts lab.
Would you want in addition to that, training?
Sure, yeah.
So 48 is for 60 more units.
Right. And then you could add another line item for training, probably.
I think it'd be important to get the continuation of the plans and get the hard, the pieces that you needed to make the plan come to fruition, that's been the talk, build the foundation and then.
So should we put 50,000 maybe in the ballpark? And, oh, I'm sorry, there was one more thing I wanted to, for you to consider, if it is a consideration. And that is, do you want us to see kind of a, a needs assessment-driven list versus, not you're going to get it down to the penny, but what does the high school get, what does the elementary get? Should there be a balance of expenditures between, or some things are disrequired? Again, I don't know if you want to get into that or if you just want to go down the priority model and then where the money falls, it falls, and then in year two, we can make adjustments to if one side was more than the other or?
My instincts are to put it where it's needed the most.
Okay, let's go down that road.
I don't know if everybody else feels.
I'm going to put tablets for now, but that could be, all right. What's next on our priority? And Andy, you're going to keep the running total?
Yeah, we're 212.
I like to see some money, I just bet towards the woods and metals in some, in some fashion. We can put some energy in on that.
So just as a reminder, I'm not sure, actually Josh has referred to it, a couple of us, we just received the, metal shop received the $18,000 CTE revitalization, so we'll be replacing the foundry.
The foundry in the sand muller has part of the fabrication program.
Upgrade there. I think if I may, is.
The other, one of the other points that, you know, there are additional resources out there often for the CTE programs that there are quite a few funding opportunities that come up on a regular basis to buy equipment, to buy additional training. What I think we would want to focus on is making that an environment that kids can work in comfortably. That's, that's a different conversation, I think, because I think that applies everywhere.
So upgrading the heating system in the metal shop specifically would?
Metal shop, yes, correct. And you also, the other thing I would, I would urge the board to consider is also just the number of students impacted. 25% take our CTE courses, 100% of them need additional, you know, some of these resources that we're talking about in the rest of the building too. I'm not saying don't focus on those, I'm not saying don't encourage them by any stretch of the imagination. It's just if we get down to those, making those decisions, sometimes those are the tough calls to make too. Because personally, I'm really emotionally invested in the CTE program. I think it's a huge program, I think Mr. Becker is a great teacher and he does a really good job. If it comes down to a question of technology that benefits everybody and forms something else, I mean, that's, that's a hard decision to make.
I'm going to put down here without a dollar amount, just because it was mentioned. Would people all want it on this column or do you want it in another column? The wood, metal?
Okay, I'm sorry, I just.
It's okay.
Point to the secondary and tertiary.
Yeah, I mean.
We can have a proper discussion.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we'll, let's, let's hold that one in our back pocket here for a second. Because I, I mean, I agree, I mean, a leaking roof, it's been leaking for, you know, but again, maybe there's other pools.
Putting in.
Yeah, yes. I did, I definitely.
There's other ways to get that covered, that's like this.
Yes, but when you're talking about repairs to a building for the purposes of CTE, there aren't necessarily more opportunities. So that's something, something to consider as well. When I heard you say you want to put some money towards the metal and wood program, I was thinking investing additional funds in equipment and things like that. There are opportunities for that, but not necessarily for building.
So yeah.
So sorry, clarification?
That's what I was thinking, you know, let's, let's get the building stabilized so it's not.
Yeah, I agree.
I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking here, but I have, I have some others unless anybody's got some. Since we're on the construction subject, one on the student health and safety needs, the one thing that has been in the back of my mind for a while is dealing with security and having all the exterior doors locked and potentially rehabbing the entrances, so there's a buzz-in system that's, you know, that's listed here. Or how we feel about, you know, I mean, to do it, I'm assuming if we're going to do, construct a second entrance with lobby and buzz-in system, the automatic follow-up to go with that is to replace and update the exterior door security. Doesn't do us a lot of good to rehab an entrance if somebody can sneak in the back door. So, so that's it, I mean, that's, there's $100,000 worth of work right there to do it for both.
That would be an example of the one-time.
Yeah, yeah, one-time expense.
Next year we have.
And next year it's such a difference.
I, I feel like that's something, that's something that's definitely been lacking in our buildings. Well, yeah, where it falls, I mean, I.
Should I put it on the list? Is this the primary focus or?
I think that's a high priority and I also think it's a good balance for people up there, something that we could do.
So I'm going to put update exterior door security.
You're talking about all those, right?
Yeah, those four.
Then we can figure lobby.
And lobbies. And give me some numbers.
I just put a hundred there.
Hundred total?
Yep.
Move that now.
112.
So again, a little bit of background on the doors. I met with a salesman who was happy to provide input regarding this topic. And he shared with me that in order to electronically program all of the exterior doors, you should figure in costs, oh, about $2,000, 2,500 per door. And that would be the capability of an authorized person to go into lockdown within five seconds. Versus, so a wireless system if you want, versus the hardwired would go up to $5,000 a door. And that is within a second, as soon as you push the button, it's, you're in lockdown. And again, one idea out even further was having every classroom door have that capability. Now at $5,000 a door, yeah, that's a lot of doors. So at least if we started with the exterior doors, and again, we have to recognize that the high school, that's a culture change. You know, they're, they're used to hanging out at the doors over here, buying this is new dolls, and that's got to change. If we're going to have a dedicated entrance, yes, those doors are locked all day and they open during passing periods. Those are programmed to do that, but we really need to change the culture that every person comes into the building has to be buzzed in or we're wasting our funds. Riley Creek, I think, is set up better to do that in its current.
And they're more used to that.
And they're more used to that, that level of security. Okay, thank you.
Oh, how much do we have left? 112.
112, okay.
Did anybody see anything on the well-rounded education page?
I thought maybe I'd talk about that in broad terms a little bit. And I think probably the best takeaway from there, I think there are some items on there that show, and again, you'll notice there's a balance there of things that high school students ask for as far as having more clubs, more interest-based activities. The Riley Creek ones are, were things that I put in there about like the artist residence or Missoula Children's Theater. But, and also something like the watershed council, they provided us a bid. Council, they provided us a, a bid of a, a plethora of activities we could choose from. Their whole package for everything that they had on there was, like I said, about eleven thousand. But as far as adding, letter A on that page, adding elective courses, you can see all the different interests they have. Part of this, publicly gonna say it, 'cause it's gonna come out pretty quick here, is in the goals that I'm gonna present to you in April, my intent is to have your, have me investigate the idea of the K-six, seven, twelve campuses. And with that becomes a lot of, and that would occur in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Is that right? This is twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So a lot of the ideas around increasing opportunities for some of the eighth-grade electives would occur in that situation. So that's just an example of something that, again, could be a, we acknowledge, yeah, those would be great, but how much of that would be better a year later when we have seven, twelve here? Now, I know that's putting the cart before the horse a little bit, there, there needs to be plenty of work to go forward, that's why I wanna put it out there now, of course not knowing there was gonna be a school closure issue, but now I have to, I can work on it. No, so with that said, that was the, kind of the filter I wanted to at least put around the, the well-rounded, knowing that there might be some time to add those. Additionally, you'll notice a lot of those as far as adding clubs really need to depend on staff, which means stipend, which means bargaining. And we're a year out from bargaining with staff, that would align more, again, in a year-two plan. If there were something like adding, adding the Saturday school as an example, with that idea of kids could come in and use the, the library every Saturday morning from nine to noon, that would be maybe the start of some expanded service. It's not necessarily extracurricular, but at least something along with the return of the power hour. That idea of providing opportunities outside of Ascend, Ascend has given us a great model. We won't be able to match what Ascend does, but we can maybe begin like the conversations of what K-four and nine, twelve look like as far as after-school programming, which would include weekends. So with that said, that's now out. Wow! And I think a lot, because that also impacts our hiring. You know, if we're gonna be hired, we have a, a seasoned staff at the elementary. In the next two or four years, we may have five, five retirements. So what type of qualities of teachers, not only to teach their core subjects, but what other subjects can they bring on, like driver's ed, or automotive, or automotive may need to wait till the new school, right? But could we do small engines as an example? So, okay, I back off my soapbox, back to you.
I got a question.
Sure.
Yeah, so just from perception and being at one of the goals of attendance, the attendance advocate.
Yes.
Could you touch on that?
You bet.
And how you feel that helps the district, or...
So I, I believe that the attendance advocate, our current one, has done a magnificent job in starting the foundation of that, and that current position is funded through our, our ESA grant that ends in September at this point. And so continuing that level of service would be something I would be proponent of as that other additional mental health, family, remember one of the top things here was how to reach out to families to provide, let's see, it's number three, I think, on the, yeah, under three, under addressing student health and safety, add supports for struggling families. That's that, that intermediary, that person who is non-authorative that can go out and say, hey, how can I help your kid get to school? That fits, that position fits into that, that category.
Can I just touch on that?
Sure.
So my perception, being in the school from time to time, was, yeah, it was neat to see him work. I don't know if he just got lucky with a great candidate, but he, he did a fabulous, he's doing a fabulous job in the school.
Unfortunately, he's moved, he has to move to Astoria at the end of May school year, but...
But seeing him, you know, show...
Not that Astoria's a bad place, but he has to move, that's... Sorry, gotta move somewhere. Yeah.
He, he was very, very, very nice gentleman.
Very effective.
Uh, yeah, just looking at the cost, I don't know if we have room for that in, I don't know what we have left up on the board there, are we still...
We're still at one twelve.
We still negotiating here?
Yeah. Right now, it's still September.
I'm the waiver holder of the Watershed Council Education Program.
Okay.
Is that on well-rounded?
It is.
Oh, yeah.
So are we getting a yay for attendance advocate around the table, or...
Yeah, I mean...
I'm just asking, 'cause it's funded through ESA right now, and we're waiting on a waiver, so there's a possibility that if we get the waiver, we can continue that position for one more year in the, in ESA, but we don't know if we're gonna have it or not.
Right.
So that would be one of those things that we could just move that back over to ESA, and then pop something else that was secondary into that position.
All right, attendance advocate and power slur at all an overlapping type?
Um, I think the strengths we would be looking for in a counselor are more on the mental health and behavioral support versus this one. Yes, there probably would be some mental health issues, or sometimes it's just this person having the conversation with the parent, hey, you know, the next step is, you know, seeing Judge Margolis. That person is kind of the, the soft cop, the, what's that called?
Good cop.
Good cop, bad cop, as far as that, but I have seen our current person be much more on the, he's on a relationship issue, he's making up a part of the kids', making those relationships with him is resulting in them wanting to come back to school. But there's no doubt there is a correlation between those two. And Tom has already acknowledged that the types of things that Ms. Rhodes does are certainly gonna be different than, she's almost like a vice principal, if you will, and so she is in the moment taking care of the crises or the behaviors and working with parents, so it would be adding a lot to this person's, to add this one. Right now, this is about a fifteen-hour-a-week position.
They make home business.
Yeah, they're complimentary, but, yeah, it would be difficult probably to ask our counselor also to be an attendance person.
Do you believe that that position helps with the school program, any things of reaching out to the community?
I think so. I think so.
Just looking at the list too, just wondering, just the balance between stuff we know we need to do, but also kind of enhancing for kids, what's best for kids, I mean, or Watershed would be one.
Yeah.
Hands-on.
How much was that, eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand.
I would say anything else should be kid-focused on that list after that, too.
Okay, I'd be happy to get another piece of paper.
But I was thinking too, I mean, if we really, if we end up wanting room to maneuver there, we could break up the, the security stuff and get over in the course of two years, do one, one year for fifty and finish it off the next year for fifty, if we need room for something. But yeah, I was thinking the same way, in the well-rounded education, or adding...
We have a pot of money.
Yeah.
Extra pot of money we should...
Hey, what's the...
Kid stuff.
Yeah, I don't know if nurse falls into that category, but, I mean, I mean, I've been standing at the office at Riley Creek, and I mean, Tina, for all intents and purposes, basically is half a nurse.
Yeah.
And a lot of the entire office staff.
Okay. If you were to say...
Oh, I was just gonna say, the estimate on here, I think, was based on contracting out.
To the SD.
To the SD, since they oversee nurses and alone, we tend not to.
We wouldn't have to.
And it'd be a contract service, it's one of those things where one year you can say, you could contract, for example, this next year for a halftime nurse, let's say, see how it goes, put him in both buildings, see if it's a positive thing, if it's not, you just don't contract for it the next year. It's not...
The question is, do we have enough for a halftime person? But if you did a quarter person, then you, it's probably gonna be difficult for someone to say, yeah, I'll come in ten hours, twelve hours a week.
But they feel surprised for about a lot of education.
Sure. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was just curious, I mean, I know we've discussed it before as a group, being thrown out there.
Well, it's interesting how many, how many, how much correspondence we get from even ODE, have your school nurse do this?
Yeah, okay, sure, it's gonna be fun.
Can this money, like, supplement other things? I mean, like, basic things like PE, music, arts?
So, yes.
Making it more of a daily, I mean, versus the rotation kids are on?
Yes, so as an example, yeah, and I think that's in, in our survey results, that fits, forty-nine percent of the people said, yeah, essentially increase the time. So right now, that, as an example, if you hired a full-time music teacher just to do K-five, then kids might get music every day rather than once a week, or three times a week, or two, whatever, it would increase, or if that was, if you were lucky enough to find someone who was in art and music certified, that that would be that as well. I think, I wish Tom was here to ask, maybe some of you know his, Mackenzie might know, does Mr. Dubrava have in the K-five, do they have like PE twice a week?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, but to answer, come back to your question, Scott, yes, this money is part of that adding so that kids can have more.
Could you run down, so for music, kids, K through five, what do they get?
They're getting music once a week right now.
And...
And, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band, kids are getting a semester of, of band currently, and then Ms. Kershaw teaches over here, she teaches two periods.
Is once a week considered adequate for...
No. Sorry, that was a music teacher, not a... But, but, you know, and...
So basing off of what Scott was...
Yeah.
Yeah, so what would be adequate, and what would that cost?
Probably another FTE almost.
Yeah.
Well, in perfect world, you would actually have a K-five.
Yes.
And then you would have a junior high and a senior high choir teacher, and you have a junior, senior high band teacher.
So again, as another example, if, if we follow the road of a possible grade configuration, would this idea of increasing FTE for music or art at a K-six building be a, a two-year, a second year? Again, I, please, I'm gonna say it publicly, I'm saying it publicly, no decisions have been made around that.
Sure.
But, but that, some of those things are better fit potentially in our progression of the funding.
No, I have, I have no problem putting that on the secondary list, the possibility of moving it any direction.
Right.
I mean...
A tough, a tough thing to finish, but we have a lot of great ideas, but it takes another salary to do that.
Right, and, and we actually have to find somebody to fill the...
How, how can you be creative without adding?
That's what I thought was the biggest frustration.
Yeah.
We have, was it Salem, we're gonna hire two-hundred-and-eighty staff members?
Yeah.
And so we were finally at a point where maybe we cannot have one in classes, maybe we can have full-time people where we've been sort of, you know, mixing and matching, and we might now not be able to get them, because they're just not there, basically, just not there.
Are we okay to put that in the second, secondary column? Secondary doesn't have to mean second year, right now secondary means this could go this way?
Yeah, we could, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, with everything on the primary side, we're at eighty-six thousand.
I, I would encourage as, as we look forward ahead to, to that seven, twelve model and increasing the electives and things like that, I'd like to advocate for at least a, a looking at the metal shop heating system, as we try to expand that as an elective, though, that is, can visit the metal shop in November, it's cold, I mean, it's hard work in there and students are bundled up, so...
I should say that we have had Reese Electric in there twice this year, trying to replace our current ones, so it's kind of a work in progress as far as the metal shop itself, the lab, but the classroom unit is definitely gone, and so there are portable heaters in now to, for heat.
How, how did that cost?
I, I don't know, if that's something that you would want me to get an estimate on, that would be something that I would spend the time investing.
So, yeah, I'd like an estimate on that, and then on the, maybe on, in the secondary column, or, or, no, primary for the, the metal shop.
Metal shop heat?
Yeah.
But then on secondary, while we're in that area, figuring out how much it costs to...
Wood shop roof?
Yeah.
Something that maybe if I could add, it may, you know, it's a person thing, it makes it a little hard, but like Ascend has been a huge hit, you know, it's not maybe necessarily making all of our students straight A's, but it's sort of creating this sort of community culture where kids are at school a lot, and it's this positive thing for them, and getting food, and hanging out, you know, and I know that Carly's constantly approached by parents of K-four who want their kids to go there because there's a lack of childcare here, you know, and they're working, passing the school hours, get out, I think that would be like a, a big benefit just for a positive community.
Can I throw out something? Can we, can we not provide it ourselves, and can we pay the contract to Currie Public Library to expand the program? I'm, I'm trying to think outside of, of employees.
Right.
I'm almost wondering...
Yeah, it could be money rather than a person, right? 'Cause I know that that grant is specifically...
Contracting out to Ascend, to...
Right, to provide those services.
Yeah.
The library.
I'm just trying to think, because a lot of times when we've tried to do like after-school things here at the high school and stuff, they're...
It's very difficult.
You're, you're taking staff members that are already...
Right, they're not gonna...
Extended themselves an incredible amount, and then adding another program to them, and, you know, the burnout is high, and the...
Right, no, I agree.
The timing, the amount of time to put into it is not, it's not even there.
Right, right, and then the back, the, the sort of foundation's already set with Ascend, you know, you're just adding more kids, allowing them to be there, as opposed to having to create a program.
And the other, the other requirement there would be facilities, certainly not room for much more, many more kids at the library, so we need to make space if, if we were gonna do that, and I'm, I'm in minor conflict interest, but the, yeah, if there's a demand on, on the K-through-four side, and even at the high school, you know, for after-school stuff.
To serve the... And K-four, yeah, and K-four, I think you would want to probably stay in the building and not necessarily...
Yeah, oh, yeah, 'cause that's, that's gonna be a rodeo.
So currently, the middle school program is two days at the library and two on camping campus.
Yeah, and sometimes it rotates.
Yeah, depending on the activity.
Yeah, but yes, it's roughly split, but you have to...
We don't have an idea of cost on that yet either, so...
Well, we have a, we have an estimate of what an hourly employee would be, I think in, in the, and I, I might be a little high, I might be a little high. Crystal shared. My numbers might be a little high here, the, I think I was doing four hours a week at twenty dollars an hour, which included benefits and, and pers, so that worked out to twenty-seven hundred dollars, and that was for like thirty weeks of work. Versus having a teacher be in charge and then having, and, remind me, somebody, again, Mackenzie, thank you, the power school model, I think I remember having one teacher and maybe an aide who did that, and we did, we paid through that through, I believe it was through our homeless grant for a while.
Right.
Was that successful?
Uh, yeah, I think so, particularly when they added the bus component.
Right.
Which Ascend also has like that.
Which, again, that's kind of piggybacking, adding, in, in the draft plan, you see that I put adding, not necessarily adding another high school after-school route, but it's taking it... taking advantage of the current route that we have. And if any practices were done at six o'clock, then they could hop on the bus at five-thirty as Ascend does. So, for the most part, high school has been a part of that. But then again, if you had extended hours at the library after school, two days a week, then they, they pick up the Ascend bus as high school kids.
And it seems like Crystal's idea of not hiring a person, but rather providing money, that might change. It's not part of.
I know fourth graders that jump in on that.
Right, yeah, right, who they're like, that's great.
Scott, are you going to say something over there, or can I jump? You look like you're about to say something.
Nope.
Okay.
Jump, please.
I was just looking at the barriers here, the barriers that hinder achievement. I think a lot of things have been covered. Some, though, that maybe we have is retention of professional staff. Just saying that?
Yeah.
Maybe I'll say anything else, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
And then, I have a question on number ten, poverty, housing, nutrition. Where are we at here? The service, number C, on addressing student health and safety needs, free or reduced females for all students. Senator Madison talked about that.
Yeah, actually. Yes, and Crystal, do you want to speak briefly about the April first?
She, I think, I wasn't here, but Tim provided me with the documentation. She was talking about CEP, which is a, it's called Community Eligibility Provision. And, once again, it's another federal program. It's for food service during the year, only it runs very differently than the one we're currently offering. We were not eligible to participate in CEP this year. You have to meet certain requirements to be eligible to participate in CEP. And you can look at it district-wide, or you can look at it school, by school. District-wide, we weren't even close. The high school was not close. Riley Creek was sort of teetering, and that's sort of where their numbers are. The problem that I have in, in that area is, they come up with a calculation, it's called an ISP, no, I don't remember what it stands for right now, but it's a certain percentage, and you have to have at least forty percent to be eligible to participate in the program. And Riley Creek tends to be a little below, a little above, a little below, depending on what. The date is April first, but we're not, not going to have school April first, so I'm not sure how we're even going to come up with that, looking at that date for next year. And then ODE actually submits data to us, telling us who's eligible, who was close, who might want to look at their data and that. And that program allows everyone to eat for free. It's a great program, if your numbers work right. Ours really haven't. And I've been, for years, I've been in close contact with our child nutrition people at ODE, and I've been told many times that if your numbers are hovering around forty percent, it is going to cost your district a lot of money to do CEP. Which is not necessarily a huge concern, in that, I would hope that we would all agree that child nutrition is incredibly important in a school district. But that program is running about a hundred-and-twenty to a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in the hole right now.
Our current program.
Our current program, the way we're running it. So, I would expect that we would lose even more money, and have to pull even more money from the general fund to cover a CEP program. That being said, there are a lot of funds coming our way, some really exciting things in child nutrition with this new, this is the SIA money. There's a whole nother pot of money for child nutrition. And it's, they're just getting everything together to, it's coming in three different pots. One of them is advanced eligibility for CEP. So, for maybe those people that weren't doing CEP like us, maybe the state will backfill some money and make it easier for us to join. But, the other one, which I think that we're definitely going to be able to participate in, is it's increased eligibility. So, right now, there's a certain percentage up to poverty, and I don't remember what it was, a hundred-and-twenty-five percent, maybe where you're on free and reduced. Oregon is now going to cover up to three-hundred percent of poverty. And so, we're already going to, expecting a big boost next year, and there should be help for a lot of families already, even without CEP for next year. I just don't know what they look like yet. They're still in the process of getting rules and regulations, excuse me, and everything done. And so, I don't have very much data yet, and what I do have has changed, sort of like what we're going through now. So, there are some exciting things coming with food service, and I'm hoping that it's going to help a lot of those families that don't quite meet free and reduced. I think that they're going to actually be able to meet a program offered by Oregon. So, we'll still have, we would still have free and reduced, and then we'd also have another group of people that the state is going to backfill, so that they can be, have free and or reduced meals.
So, the end result is meeting the student comment, can we have more kids have free access to meals?
And the state's already doing that.
But it'll be, it'll be through the SSA pot three versus bucket four.
Yeah, and it's exciting, once we have more information, I'll be bringing it to you guys to talk to you about it.
This is Josh, the end question. Add elective courses of high student interest that are currently not being offered at the high school. How much demand do we?
Well, and I think that, that varies, because we added two electives this year, actually, and the enrollment in both of those was under ten. So, realistically, there's, there's always an interest in it. I think there's always an interest in what more variety could be put out there. I think when push comes to shove, and part of it's a scheduling game. I mean, it's a balance of, like, where do you put it? Because if you're, if you're butting it up against a core class that a kid has to take, and that's only offered once a day, it becomes very hard for them to enroll in that elective. That's one of the challenges that small schools have. But, the other side of it is, students will often say, I wish we had this, I wish we had this, I wish we had this, I wish we had this. Will they actually sign up for it if it's available? That's a different, that's a different question. I mean, to, to be perfectly honest, that's how home act courses disappeared in public education to begin with, for a lot of it was, well, I, I don't need to learn this stuff, I'm out. Now, there's a request for them to come back, so there tend to be trends and tides. With, with the data we collected this year based on, on adding new electives, I think we're going to look at a different process for how to do it in the future. But I'm always open to, if a kid's interested in something, we're going to try to find a way to do it.
What I heard more from the student group was, and again, it goes maybe hand-in-hand with the seven-twelve model, is, I wish there were more than just one math teacher, or one science teacher, or one social studies teacher. So, I mean, whether it's getting a lot of relationships, or just the amount of knowledge or specialty someone has, it's always better to have it. I don't think any teacher would disagree that they, they like to have a colleague, you know, and so that's our potential new model, gives us some, some movement in that direction.
And maybe that's when the time to have that discussion, just what, you know, after that happens. How are we on the feeling about the number of classified staff in either building?
Sure. It's a good question. That would be a good one for Tom to, to answer. I think for the high school, both of our, our instructional assistants are special ed, specific.
And we, we just, we opted to share for two hours a day, one of them, because currently, where we're at, we're, we're doing, we're utilizing ours well. Riley Creek, I think there's a need still, there's always an added elementary level for additional.
And part of that is their, their curriculum design around reading instruction.
Yep, right.
You know, where you use the instructional assistants as teachers, if you will. And, but again, if you, if you look at other funding programs like Title I or Special Ed, we always have to balance the, the resources we have, and maybe, in a broader sense, a teacher assistant is a teacher assistant. But how they're funded sometimes impacts on the service that they can provide, if that makes sense. And so, could they use more? Sure. But, I think until it's more specifically, again, that may be a conversation for a year or two in a re, in a restructuring possibility.
For adding a whole nother teacher to the building, so that.
That's, class size reduction in itself would, could impact the, the less need for an aide. It's far be much more of a cost, but, but, right.
Sure.
Yeah, so the idea of you get two or three aides for the price of a, I, I, my numbers are off, but you know what I'm saying. Okay, back to our list then.
Uh, so if we just arbitrarily slap ten thousand on each of the, on the metal shop and the, the K four.
I think ten thousand is reasonable, okay?
All right, okay, what, that is a question, what does the metal shop operate on now? Are the woods and metals, what's the, what's its, yeah, what is it operating on?
Sure. So, in the, in the wood shop, they have two hanging heaters, and so, that would be the mop. And right now, at the metal shop, we have those kind of orange glow coil type of, well, they were, you're going to Ojaiakas, they were there when you were heading right. So, they're still there.
They don't light up any.
They are obsolete.
You're going to paint them orange to pretend it's orange.
They are obsolete, and, and they have to be replaced. And so, one of our current ideas is we have two of those big giant blower types that are in the maintenance garage, or the maintenance shed at Riley Creek. They're just sitting there collecting, literally collecting dust. So, the idea was at least temporarily to move those two units into the wood shop and see, I'm sorry, into the metal shop, to see if those would take care of the, the lab heat. But in the classroom, it still needs replacement.
Yeah, so I should phrase that question better, too. What, yeah, what's the woods and metals, what's, what's its operating budget?
Oh, operating budget, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have phrased that.
So, that's okay.
The budget for all students in the beginner courses comes out of the one-hundred funds. We forecast how much, how many kids are going to be in the class for the year, and that we look at the actual, I had Mr. Becker this year design the, the per-cost student of doing the basic projects required to pass, beginning woods and beginning metals. Advanced students, the, the projects are done in communications with parents in an agreement that, basically, there will be a certain amount of support, but then additional projects will need additional materials, and therefore, it becomes part of their student bill. But the parents have to sign off and agree to it before anything's done. That way, there's no surprise, you're getting a, you know, a hundred-and-fifty-dollar gun rack that you didn't know you were getting, and, you know, that's, that's the, this suddenly gets added on to the bill at the end of the year. They know what's coming, they've agreed to it, and that's, that's part of how it works.
Does it have there's any, I mean, for improvement on, on the woods and metals budget, you know, for programming and?
So, I think per capita, knowing that programs like that cost more than others, I, I think right now they're adequately funded.
And typically, I, I put additional funding towards those programs, recognizing that they are going to cost.
And then knowing that CTE, some of those, there are some other funding sources.
Thank you.
Our partnership with the college, partnership with Advent Tech for the metals manufacturing. Okay, is anything else rising to the primary level?
I have the question on the reading coach, hiring a reading coach, because I'm not quite sure.
You bet.
Exactly what that means.
Sure.
Or how it fits Riley Creek, but.
You bet, be happy to explain that one. So, we currently with Title I have a reading specialist, and that person's primarily, primary responsibilities are to organize all of the instruction for, not only for core instruction, but also for all the intervention groups that happen throughout the day. This, this coming fall, the staff is going to be reorganizing. In an analysis, they found, and you've heard the term RTI before, the Response to Intervention, where there's a predetermined system and sequence of how kids get support based on their growth. They have found recently that they have more kids in intervention because their core instruction is weak. So, the plan this year is to move more of their support into core instruction, which means more support for the teacher, if you will. So, there's where the reading coach comes from. The idea of someone who is a, is more of an expert can do side-by-side coaching and co-instruct as necessary. Right now, we have a, I would consider like our mentor teacher, one of them is kind of serving in that reading coach role. The ESSA grant we talked about, which may extend, could be a reading coach in its third year of life, if you will, through the ESSA grant, so that would be the backup to this potentially. If we did not have the ESSA grant, this would be a service that we could consider to help the Riley Creek teachers. And if you look at other school districts' plans, they're full of instructional coaches, behavior specialists, they're, they're, again, those are the big districts with, with big systems.
But this is transitioning for that one?
It is. So, again, that could be a one-year expense, or it could become a perennial expense, depending if you have the right person.
We're also ramping the Title I program at Riley Creek. Our funding has greatly decreased, and so, we didn't even have enough funds to cover the children's year. So, we actually pulled a majority of our other fund, our other PECO funds to cover Title I this year. And, and so, they're in the process of actually ramping that entire program, too, with the idea that they're going to put more time on the first dose of language arts, which comes from the main teacher.
Were it, if we called metal shop ten and K four five, or, or ten?
Let's do ten.
Ten, all right. That puts us at sixty-six.
Oh, and do we want to put overhead on here a little bit?
What was it, five percent?
Five percent.
Yeah, move five percent for overhead. We'll pull that back into the general.
Indirect cost. So, five percent of that would be two, three, three, twenty thousand.
My, my brain's not working well. Twenty-one thousand six hundred.
So, indirect, I'll just put.
So, we'll take, we'll take that out of our running total, then. I'll just call it twenty-two six hundred.
Twenty-two is left.
Indirect cost.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Will you share with us what the artist wrote that's in Woods and Children's Theater?
Sure. So, basically, it's in an effort where we currently don't have, right now in K five, teachers do their own art. So, this would be an experience that by, similar to Watership's program, where you could designate a certain class or grade levels, that would have somewhat, a guest artist that comes in and, and takes over the art instruction for the classroom teacher. The Missoula Children's Theater is something we had, it's very popular out in central and eastern Oregon, where they have a, they basically come in on a Monday morning, and by Friday, they put on an hour show with full costumes. Kids have memorized all of their lines, their musicals, they're around, usually around fairy tales. And it's a, it can, in our, my, in my little school, it essentially took over half the school day for a week. But in our model, it would probably be an after-school, like, they would get together every day from three to six, and then do the performance on Friday afternoon.
Those seem like very inexpensive, big impact things to me.
Yeah.
That are focused on kids.
I like it, sign me up.
Primary list?
What was the cost on that?
About five thousand each.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what to say.
He's doing the final math.
I feel I was lost in the dream. I dreamed it was a school board meeting.
Was it a dream?
Hoping to wipe out some negative.
Well, I was just thinking about some of the basic needs of a school, too, I mean, custodial and maintenance. You know, we talk a lot about the little stuff, but I guess, I mean, the school has custodians.
We do.
The school really doesn't have anybody just generally taking care of the school, in the sense of.
As far as, as far as maintenance?
Yeah.
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 I mean, that's overwhelming in two older schools. But those little things just get old. There's really no one looking at them in the sense of, I'm gonna fix them.
So right now, how we kind of handle that is we have a more seasoned custodian, Trent, who has taken on a lot of the Level One interventions as far as maintenance-type items. He's quite...quite talented in a lot of different things. One strategy that I've considered is...sorry, leave me back up just a little bit. So you might remember before this year, our...we had a maintenance director slash transportation. And we took that responsibility off and made it this full-time transportation. The maintenance position...there is a maintenance position in the collective bargaining agreement. One of my ideas was to...and I haven't...I'm saying this out loud, so I have to apologize to Crystal. But that idea of someone like...one of the custodians being...have a differential pay, like, two hours a day their maintenance rate and then six hours a day their custodial, knowing that at any time, they could be working on a maintenance issue, but their day-to-day responsibilities are custodial. And again, that person would assist me. And my current responsibility as maintenance director is essentially to take his input after he's gotten done a Level One intervention. And he says, "Oh, yeah, you need to call so-and-so." And so then I do the business part of the next step, which is what our maintenance director position was meant to be during the school year. It was...the previous structure was someone who would be that contact. But during the summer, in place of doing transportation, would do those maintenance-type things. Recognize that you can't wait and do just maintenance in the summer. That's why having someone consistently available. Now, that proposal I put out there may need to be negotiated. I don't even know how that would work. But that type of...I think as far as the use of these funds, we have to, just as a reminder, and it's probably something I should've said at the beginning, how does it impact the mental health and being and safety of kids? And how are these strategies helping the under...generally underrepresented populations in increasing their achievement? So think about those two statements again. Do a quick lens through what we've put on here. Are we addressing mental health, behavioral health supports, opportunities for all kids, but specifically underrepresented, underachieving, under...historically underrepresented groups, such as people, students of color, special ed, homeless, foster care, and I think that was...and students with disabilities. So we don't have to do that out loud. But if you look through what you've determined as priorities right now, have they fit the lens of those? Because I have to be able to justify in the narrative that those two statements have been vetted to help people. And yes, they could be broad. I mean, we all recognize that safety. I mean, kids are sad, I don't feel. I can't learn if I'm under two jackets and a sweater. You know, so that whole idea of heating a building goes to the health. My building is not secure. You know, something could happen on that. Emotionally, mentally, could impact my learning. That's the safety of the security doors. So take a moment to run those ideas through. And do we need to change anything based on those? And then we have, what, forty or fifty thousand left?
Uh, if we take the ten out, we'd be at thirty-four.
Are you guys...got McKinnon?
Uh, there's one...it wasn't actually in the pack. And maybe it's being talked of and painted another way. But something that would increase electives at the high school and it would help with teacher retention is what if there was some sort of CTE childcare program at the high school? You could pay for a teacher to be in charge of it. Wouldn't have to be full-time. And then they have students who take the class and provide childcare. And then the teachers have this added benefit of having childcare for their kids plus community members for this sort of... I know that Rusty had been talking about paying for it in a different way, but maybe this would be a way to go.
I don't know if you know, it's on the list.
Oh, it is on the list.
But it's on stage two in the back, unfortunately. It just...it just slipped out. So...
It just seems like it would hit a number of those categories with one, not even full-time.
So that idea of adding another CTE pathway in child development would, you know, if you will, have an onsite daycare, if you will, that could be for employees or for the community. Right. And if I may, just to click aside, I really appreciate you guys hanging in here. This is tough work. But another thought around that year-two potential move would be the idea, once we kind of get this...there's the whole Oregon preschool promise, that idea, we have a group of our students who are currently being served in Head Start. Another one are with the private preschool currently that we lease property to. Then there's that whole other section that's not being served. It was intentional on my part. That's another whole funding source that's not a part of the SIA. But there are significant funds available through the SSA that would support a preschool that becomes...that we become a pre-K-12 district. But that's not something I wanted to add on to our place this year. Potentially, in that type of a move, would now we have more room at Riley Creek to expand programs or have a little more room, that would be the time to do it. Quick aside.
So, okay.
Is the mentor, the teacher mentor program, the funding for that is gone?
It's the same, it's the same as the attendance advocate.
Yeah, so it is.
So it's potentially gonna end. ODH has requested a waiver to add one more year.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I would like...I mean, you know, it's too early to...maybe it's not too early to know how much of an effect it's having. But, you know, in the teacher retention piece and even just overall effectiveness of the teachers, I feel like that's probably a pretty good investment on our part.
Okay.
But I don't...if we've got money for it for another year, potentially...
We'll know and...
Until...
Put it on the main list and then pull something from the secondary list. Don't worry.
Yeah, yeah, we could swap. I mean, if everybody thinks that. Luke and I sat with them and they...did we...did they come to the board meeting?
No, actually, you and Luke met with me and your...
Well, yeah, but we didn't have a follow-up in a public meeting, no.
Yeah.
I think we talked about it briefly. Yeah, I mean, that's...
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just...
I should've brought that guys.
We've got a group of four teachers, four seasoned veteran teachers roaming the building on a regular basis, trying to help out the new folks and...
They were talking about their needs of training, right?
Yeah.
Professional development for them. That's one of the big needs that they needed, in terms of tools, to help them do their job better. But yeah, they gave a report of what there was, four recommended areas to cover. It seemed like that, just with the district leadership team and that peer group was a great combo for helping guide some things. And so what was the cost on that then?
Right now, I think in here, I had...I took this year's about, which was what, twenty-nine thousand, I think? Does that sound right?
You just put thirty. You put thirty in on the...
That's high. So if we said twenty thousand maybe? Do you want that in the primary with the idea that it might... Or do you want to put it secondary with the idea that it might fill?
Yeah, maybe secondary, just, I mean, if everybody feels the same way about it. We talk about teacher retention and trying to have a core group of teachers who stay here longer than two or one or two or three years, giving them some support. I mean, I...yeah. Maybe we can get a full read back at the end of the year on him or somebody.
One that hasn't come up here, but I would be maybe one that might just fit this gap, is we're getting our two new buses in the next week or so. Our delivery on our last bus a year ago. All three of those have security cameras. One of the lists here is to outfit the remaining parts of our fleet with cameras. And I'm waiting for a final estimate from Western Bus, but I put twenty thousand down as a rough estimate. That would really, I think, answer a lot. It would help in a lot of ways. If we don't do it here, which it qualifies, I'd probably have to make it a general fund expense
To just, yeah, I mean...
As a priority.
Yeah, you need to...do you wanna do it either way? Yeah, I mean, from a liability standpoint, it's probably...
And they would also need those, kind of like the last event that I'm aware of involved one of those underserved
Right.
Kettos.
Right.
And it would've been nice to be able to see
Right.
What was going on on the bus. Yeah, safety.
Is it okay if I put
Yes.
Bus cameras on there?
And another one type thing that in the secondary, you can be replaced with something else.
So that takes us down to fourteen, if we're...
And that might be enough. That might be...I guess if I may at this point, is there anything still on the list? Or something that's not on the list that you think should be on the list that fit the primary category? Because I...if thinking about that...I'm sorry, I'm gonna let you think. And I'll be quiet, looking for a response there and then I'll...
Well, we still have some room, right, or no?
Yeah.
Or think of it as a priority, but something that might go here because this won't work out. If we can't find an elementary teacher, we've got eighty-five thousand off this list that we need to switch back to. So is there something that's essential on this list that you wanna make sure is covered in one way or the other? With the possibility of it being year one, but it might slide to year two?
For increasing instructional time, I'm not really sure how this one reads, but it's professional development with intro instructional technologies and program being used at college level. But I mean, aligning with the techno...I mean, is there needed funds to get our instructors up to speed so that they're effective with their new tools?
Yes, I think that was the spirit of that suggestion. Whether, again, that's using these funds or just identifying the need and then we use other funds, whether that's...yeah. At this point, whether that's true, you know, again, it could maybe be covered in another grant. But if we were to put a general category of technology, professional development, to keep it general, but think of that as, well, because again, that ties in to our whole dilemma of this week, right? Where we have staff that aren't prepared to make those instructional... Make technology a part of their instruction, whether it's distance learning or everyday classroom stuff.
I think that's a big one on the technology plan.
Right, that's like the third piece. Like, the infrastructure, we've got good. If we're buying more devices, that would be phase two. And then phase three would be the...what are the teachers and kids, how are they using it? So, yeah.
The other one that's listed in here around professional development is the trauma-informed care. That's...I'm gonna add that back. Again, that might be some other funding, either through the ESD. We're developing a partnership right now with the UFO. And our district was identified as one specific one that might give some extra assistance in coaching around this topic of trauma-informed care and instructional practices. So again, we're putting the need here, but we know that could possibly be funded through another source.
That would...if we're calling that ten, that would be four thousand.
Okay.
Close enough.
Pretty close.
Close enough, close enough. So are there any other things that absolutely you want as primary?
No, but can we...I was just gonna say, something we've talked about in the past couple of years that we haven't talked about in a while, science. How are we doing science?
So this year, we're buying more materials with our general fund money. I think that's kind of where we are with that at this point.
We have a new teacher. We're gonna do it for another year to continue to develop them.
You guys had mentioned a nurse previously. Did you want that on the secondary tertiary? Is it a nurse physician or a nurse contractor? The con...well, it could be either. But we were thinking contracting as... Yeah, yeah, that would be... It's not our area, Mrs. I didn't know if you guys wanted that, if they're not, she talked about it, but I don't know. What happened with that?
It was one of the top ones from our needs assessment.
Higher high school.
Hi.
Help professionals in system.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I have no problem on the secondary, you know, if that's our...
Contracting, we wouldn't know, right?
We would, I think there was sixty-six thousand dollars on there. I think we were looking at about half time. And we were looking at contracting because, you know, obviously, we don't...
Yeah, need a full-time.
Have a supervisor nurse or tell them what they should or shouldn't be doing.
And as an example, is this something that Port Orphans looking at? And so we can share a person. Brookings currently has a teen health center on campus. I'm not sure who funds that, but is there a possibility of a partnership? Of course, the time you need the nurse is when they're not there. Those things are gonna happen. But just as far as protocols and education and all of that, versus having someone just sit there and wait for the thing to happen?
I was gonna say, that's the reality. The most larger districts have got away from having somebody who was a nurse at, you know, multiple nurses in a district. They might have one certified nurse covering a number of health aides that they are responsible for training and...
So there's that where the CNA...
Yeah.
I'm not sure yet of the specifics. Maybe Nancy, you could be helped be a resource within your organization on that. I don't know the department, but...
Get some doing there, I mean.
But that idea of, it could be a medical assistant of some sort that, rather than an RN or LBN or something like that.
Anything we need to put up there?
That's enough for me to start up with. So the next step then would be putting this all together. My question to you all is, maybe it's an unfair question, is do we feel twofold? Do we...do you feel, do we feel that we have met the intent of the law by you approving the plan? Which has to be done by before April fifteenth in a public session? We've talked about it for a couple hours here. Is that enough to say we're approving it with ten, with the edits you make? Or option B is, do we continue to refine this? Hopefully, I get the chance to go on April sixth to Salem, be a part of the quality assurance panel, which is another part of the segment, find out what others are doing, what things are getting approved, what things are getting kicked out, revise our plan so what actually does go in, which that would result in, in probably another meeting. Maybe brief, but it would be enough to just say it's approved in its final draft. Now, that word draft is still on there because there is one more part of the application that's not on here. that's not on here. This applicant, this document will get sent to ODE, it will go through that first level of review, they'll go through the quality assurance panel review, and as a part of that first review, there are some longitudinal growth goals that have to be attained through this money as well. So there's another level of accountability. That is graduation rate, ninth graders on track, those third grade reading level. So what we would do is, in a table, put what our current levels are, then ODE would set the targets for us, be real targets, versus one hundred percent of our third graders are gonna be a grade level, but right now, we're at forty. Okay, so they're gonna help, you know, that's our intent, but the reality is, so they can go back to legislators and say, yes, these monies attributed to more kids graduating on time, more ninth graders passing classes their first year, and so on. There's one more category that I'm forgetting at this point, as part of it. So that'll be in addition to this application. That becomes the final application, and then that's what then goes to the funding people, and then that money is then sent back to us. So with this type of flexibility, then, Crystal's challenge then is making a, we haven't decided if it was gonna be general fund or probably special, the two-hundred series, if you will, just like Riley Creek Garden, or whatever those others, the High School Success Act, then we would begin to build a budget based on these priorities, that we get done through the April meeting.
They prefer that it all be spent by June thirtieth, correct?
Absolutely, it has to all be spent by June thirtieth or twenty-one.
And I know that doesn't seem like a column, but it is actually very difficult, as you've been here for two hours trying to come up with four, it's actually very difficult to spend that amount of money in one year, when you're talking about adding as much, maybe as we are.
So yes, maybe we get to the end of the year, and we have twelve thousand dollars left, okay, well, we better go buy another cart of tablets.
But having that on there is actually a safety, because we can, we sent sixty, but we really were able to get a great deal on seven five.
Yeah. I was gonna leave into a question, I was just saying, are there purchasing guidelines or policies that wouldn't need to be reviewed for you to be able to spend that money, I mean?
Well, it'll all be budgeted, so there will be appropriation authority to spend it. And then, anything that we're purchasing, we'll, our regular policies will take place. If we want to buy any item over five thousand dollars, we'll have three days, for example. And all that will, all be, is already the way.
In the application. Am I missing a page? It might be, I believe it's actually part of part five, there is actually, ODE has developed a budget template, and again, I'll forward it to you just for your information, but essentially, it does what we've done here. We've made this as a priority, that this is, this fits well-rounded education, this one fits safety, and then you list it, then this is person, or this is an item, is this a one-year, is this a three-year? That's, it's a big matrix, if you will. So that would also be a part of the April fifteenth. So, thank you for that process. It's nine o'clock. We had, being very ambitious, scheduled a time for you to meet tomorrow evening with Carol Samuels. Now, with that said, and because of every other things that we have talked about tonight related to school closure and things like that, I'm only offering this as a thought. Well, first of all, do you, would you want to, or come back and meet in April with the final product, or do you feel comfortable with what we've talked about tonight, meeting the letter of the law that you've approved the plan?
I'm just speaking for myself, I'm comfortable with saying it's approved, and then letting you mix and match, and even, you know, go, maybe potentially participate in that April sixth discussion.
Right.
But, I mean, you know, I mean, we know what's on the list, that's not gonna change, it's just a matter of arranging the blocks now, right?
Okay.
I mean, I.
Well, here was my, here was my wicked thought. If you were interested in having another meeting to do this, would you also potentially entertain the idea of postponing Carol Samuels to the same night? Still having one night, knowing this would be a quick action item, probably, if you've had time to review it ahead of time, and then we see if Carol's, I'm gonna, again, I've done this tap dancing on the spot, referring a little bit to Crystal, as far as the, there was, I sent, we sent a sense of urgency that you wanted to get more information about the bond as soon as possible. So we have arranged that for tomorrow night. Carol will call in, basically give an overview of what the bond process is like, what are the different types of bonds that occur, and hopefully, would also give us an indicator of what our demographics, specifically, their research says, what does Central Curry School District demographics say on the possibility of different types of.
She said that would be phase two.
That, so take out that.
Phase one is just a basic bond overview, and how it works in a school district, how you calculate things, how, I'm expecting an hour.
Okay, so she would call in, we'd put her on speakerphone, we'd have a, sit around like this for an hour tomorrow.
If it helps to make the decision, I'm not gonna be able to be here tomorrow, I have to hold it to another meeting, it's more urgent than that.
Okay.
Some things that would need to be dealt with.
Carol seemed to be flexible, again, please, I'm not trying to promote the idea I just shared, but Carol did seem to show some flexibility in April. You don't have to meet on a Wednesday, but traditionally, we've met up. So, and again, Andy, defer that to you to lead the discussion for everybody on what.
I'm open, I'm open to either. Do you feel it would be beneficial to meet on this again?
Quite honestly, I do.
Okay, well, then let's, let's do that.
Do both.
Yeah, let's reschedule it.
Well, are you along with the idea of trying to see if Carol could do it the same time?
Yes, combo it up.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. And I would project out to maybe that April eighth, is that a good day? I know we were avoiding the first Wednesday of the month, because you had other commitments.
But that's the first Wednesday.
No, that would actually be the second Wednesday.
April, I don't, it was March.
It was March, okay.
Yeah, March, it was.
Yeah, hold, yeah, this, April sixth through the day.
April eighth looks okay.
Yeah, at what time?
Well, we would try for the five or five. We did the five-thirty, for the convenience of those that work till five. And, should we do that then? What else we got?
Yeah, I'll try to reschedule.
Okay.
I'm in Tuesday, and I'm trying to reschedule something.
Okay, you sure?
Well, we can go two.
You want to do April seventh?
It doesn't matter to me.
Do you guys want to do Tuesday? It doesn't matter, it does not matter what day of the week.
No, mine's wide open.
You're gonna go on the sixth.
I'm going on the sixth.
So you might want, I'm almost wondering if we should have made it to that thing, just.
How about Thursday?
Because you're gonna want to possibly revamp some things.
Right, and have time to do it.
Depending on what happens on the.
How about April ninth? Can we pencil that in?
That one, Thursday?
I'm ready to go home.
Okay. Is that Thursday?
Thursday is the ninth, okay. Are we good for the ninth?
Yeah.
And we're good for five-thirty?
Yes.
That's what we'll try.
Now, knowing that's also parent-teacher conference night, but those are gonna be done by phone, rather than in person, so, but just, don't make your appointments for that night, when your teachers call for appointments.
Okay. Nothing tomorrow, right?
Nothing tomorrow, we will cancel tomorrow and reschedule for the ninth.
There you go.
Assuming Carol can be by, not, and we'll let you know.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right, yes.
We'll bypass the individual board reports.
Oh, you are?
Actually, no, the chairman.
Second, I blew them.
Yes, ten seconds.
Questions that will prompt any more answers or questions.
Okay.
So cancel the first announcement?
Are you about to, John?
Yes, unless you have something that needs to be discussed while the meeting's still in session.
Okay.
Can we add the childcare CTE as a secondary?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, you're right.
Okay, yeah, you guys can read the, you know.
And, again, we're still fluid, sorry, we're a little bit fluid, so, you go home, you sleep about it, you think about it, this is somewhat fluid until we get to April ninth. But, the sooner we know, so we can cross things out, would be preferred.
Meeting is adjourned at nine, close seven.